I'm Chase Mesa.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna call to order the school board meeting of December 6th, 2023. If you could all join me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, we are on to the minutes for November 1st, 15th, and 29th.
I'll move the minutes for November 1st.
Yeah, a second. All right, are there any comments or discussion?
Actually, I might have messed up on me because that was what I was gonna because there shouldn't be a meeting.
You can move it.
I'll move it.
They can move it into sub steam. Uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving? Aye. And we are on to the fifth and one exception.
I was three zero one.
Three zero one.
I'll move, uh, next one, November 15th.
Second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the November 15th? Aye. Aye, that one I have sub steam.
Four one.
Four zero one. All right.
We will also move it to the microphone.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Okay. Um, I'm going slightly out of order. I'm doing sort of a mini agenda review currently just because I wanted to um, address public comments. So for this first public comments, I'm gonna request that it's not related to the high school. I'm gonna give people the opportunity to make comments about the high school after we've reviewed the stuff about the high school. So we will do a review of the high school stuff. We will let people have public comments. Then we will, the board will take action on the contracts if it so chooses. So the first public comments um, will be non-high school related. That is my response. Um, does anyone have any public comments to start?
Chair.
Yes, please.
Fancy. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Don Gorman. I've lived in this town forty-two years and I served on the school board for twelve of them. So I know what you're going through. Been there. I have basically two questions and then one suggestion. Has nothing to do with high school. Question one, in um, last year I was paying seven dollars and twenty-five cents in taxes for the school portion of my taxes. And the bill I got recently is fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents for the school portion, which more than doubles. And my question to the board is, what has caused that to double? That's incredible amount of money in one fell swoop. Everybody have an explanation or it gets in that question?
Sure, typically we don't respond to have a back and forth of public comments, but if you have a quick.
It's just that I went through my taxes too and I looked at um, last year was fifteen sixty-three, well, this is this year, the one we just got. The one before was fourteen fifty, then twelve seventy-nine, then thirteen twenty-eight, and then nineteen was fifteen sixty-two. So that's according to my tax bill. That's different than what you're saying, so I don't know why my tax bill would be different than yours. I had last year fourteen fifty. Yeah, so I think maybe you need to look at your bill again.
Well, um, so I'm not, I'm not sure what I, I just said, I was thinking. Sure what you said about. God explained the double.
No, just that public comments typically we don't have a back and forth. It's not a question and answer session. It's for the public to come make comments.
Well, given the tax bill, don't you think it might be a good idea tonight?
Not during public comments. If we wanted to add an agenda item, we could consider doing that. Um, but I don't think it's appropriate during the public comment section.
Yeah, right, for tonight.
We haven't done an agenda review yet, so we could add an item.
Okay. In that case, I would like to add it as an agenda, right?
Okay, someone is welcome to make that request during agenda review.
Okay, oh, thank you, appreciate that. Um, and the other thing is um, I don't know if you want to wait for the agenda or uh, there was no, last year there was a close to a million dollars returned to the tax to the town. And this year evidently there was none. So my question would be, when I say aye, I think I'm speaking for an awful lot of people in town. It just don't happen. So there was no money returned to the town for tax relief. I work closely with the state on the other levels and I happen to know that I don't have the figure. It's amazing, but there was a considerable money set back to Deerfield for tax relief. So uh, would anybody like to answer that or do you want to bring it up at the agenda?
Um, it's certainly something we could bring up during the course of the budget conversation, but it has been three minutes, so fortunately we will need to move on to the next public comment. There is another public comment session at the, at the bottom of the agenda if there are additional things you'd like to discuss.
Okay, and then the last thing I'd like to know is, which I was bringing up whatever, um, is why the meetings are starting at six o'clock? People can't get here at six o'clock. Work, we used to meet at seven, so that people would have a chance to get here and have some dialogue. We also did not have a rule that says not having conversation. We take comments. Uh, that results in a lot of angry comments because there's no dialogue. So anyway, we'll bring that up a little bit later.
Great, thank you so much.
Right, oh, and by the way, I do want to compliment you on the fact that you are using proper procedure with motions, seconds, and things of that nature. The select may need a little work on that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments for this portion of the public comment?
I'm just wanted to follow that. I would hope that you would add on the, that were misstatements, just the, there's a misunderstanding that the sixth month bill was the entirety of last year's bill and I would hope that you, I just would ask that you put it on the agenda so that those kind of statements like that their tax bill went up. Um, also, I would hope that you, assuming Earl actually publishes what I sent him, I sent him a data sheet of all the breakdowns, so I didn't get a five year review. I don't know if it would fit in his little newspaper or not, but um, I hope that, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, anything else? Any other?
Hi, Dawn. Hi. Kimberly Black Meeting House Hill. Um, I looked at the, like, the budget overview stuff and I know, I think the biggest thing the school needs is still space, but I know looking at money, we're, we're never going to be able to maintain our operating budget now and get an addition. This town's just never gonna pass that. Like, I don't, I don't have answers. I have opinions that are probably not anybody else's opinion sitting up here about what to do, but things, things are gonna have to be cut or changed in order to be able to get the space that the school needs and we really do need space. So we really have to get creative in order to find that money in the budget to be able to start holding back on those expenses for the town people to be able to say yes to an expansion. We need to get rid of those monitors and it's, it's gonna be uncomfortable and it's not gonna be popular opinion and I don't think it should be cutting salaries, but I do think that it should be cutting positions. I think we really need to look at where we're spending our money and what positions we're using and how we're using them and find ways to work around that. If that's taking a little bit of money out of a top tier budget and giving it to another classroom for like the teacher to support that or get extra training to be able to do that, I really think that needs to happen. Not gonna say my opinions on which ones will go, because that, just to be in review, but um, I, there just needs to be space. We need to find it here. Um, my big thing is subscriptions. I, I hate computers for teaching our elementary school students. I know they love it and my kid loves his tablet. He loves interacting with the television. They love just pressing those buttons, but I don't think they retain the information from clicking yes or no on a screen. They need to learn to write it out. They need to learn to open a book. I don't think we need subscriptions in the library. We can use some free websites for like PBS that they have. Anywhere we can get rid of those that just promote more screen time, I really think we need to get rid of them. I would like to see worksheets that they're writing on. These kids just, they need to interact with not screens. At this point, we've created a, a generation that's just instant gratification. Like, I got an echo to keep track of a timer in the kitchen because I can't keep track of two timers at once and now my kid can ask any question and get an instant answer. We used to have to wait days to go to the library to go look it up and everything's just at their fingertips and it's not a hundred percent on the school to extract that from them, but any way we can find a way to get that away from them, I would really like to see. Twenty seconds left. All right, my last question was just about um, when we do the end of the school surveys for like what you want for your student, I would really like to consider a bubble about teachers because I think it's really important that if there's a reason why a parent or a child or somebody wants another teacher or a teacher would like that student, I think, I don't think it needs to be a deciding factor, but I would really think that it would be helpful in trying to determine some of those placements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, honey. Meeting House Hill. I'd like to echo what Kim was saying, um, because some of us have been talking about this and looking at how kids learn and I was unaware for a while until last year, I guess, that we've got kindergarten through, well, kindergarten on up, kids learning on computers and math programs on computers and that sort of thing. And I think that if you look at how kids learn and retain information, it's through writing and they need to go back to having pencils and worksheets and books to, to work from and not computers. The last mission we're doing with young children in K through three, probably even four, is putting them on a computer, quite frankly, to learn anything. They're gonna get that technology when the time is appropriate and they will not be behind if they start working on computers in fifth grade or sixth grade, I guarantee you. Um, so I find it really sad for those kids. I think you would see a huge difference in retention, the number of INPs that you need, how kids are reacting in school. I have said many times, my daughter is in sixth grade, she's in Montessori. I mean, they use computers to write their stories, but they are learning using abstract materials, concrete, concrete materials, things that you can manipulate, right? Manipulatives and move from there. And the amount of retention that they carry with them is amazing. So I'd really like to see the curriculum in, in those areas, especially for your young kids, reviewed and revised to move them away from learning everything on computers, because I think it's detrimental to their overall education and their, and their overall health, quite honestly. Um, live feed, I'd love to see you bring in the seventh and eighth graders and have them set up your live feed. Why wouldn't, right? That's part of a computer science curriculum. There have been issues with it. Bring the kids in, it's something they can do. Extracurricular activity, they come in, they set it up, they get you going, they turn it on and then, and then they're out of here. Um, they could probably do it better than any of us, I would, I would guess. Um, I would echo what Kim said as well on shared spaces um, and subscriptions to computer programmings. Um, and lastly, on the budget, um, I, given that hundreds of thousands of dollars in surplus that the school has had year after year in the last eight, seven, eight years, I do think it's a little disingenuous to complain that the public never passes a budget and kind of blame issues at the school on that, because if you're following your budget all along throughout the year, you'll see where you're gonna have those surpluses and you can move money into another line item if you have a dollar open, right? If that budget line item is open. So if you needed that money, you could have moved it and used it. Um, I know it's been returned to the taxpayer, but the fact is to not use it and then say blame the public for not passing a budget, it, it's a little disingenuous, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Fancy shoot Pleasant Hill Road. Um, yes, computers are very much a part of the school, but in my thirty-eight years here teaching, they were a supplement to what I was doing. They were never what I used for full teaching. Actually, there'd be days the computers in my room never got turned on, which some parents were upset about because I preferred doing the hands-on. No, I haven't taught here in four years, but I come in and I sub and as a sub, it would be really easy for them to leave plans to say, put them on here for math and put them on here for reading and put them on here for that. That does not happen in the classrooms that I sub in. So yes, are they used more than they used to be? Mm-hmm. Because there are some valuable things on them. Are they what the teachers are using to totally teach? Not in my experience.
Thank you.
Greg Woodmore, North Rose. Um, the livestream, it's been so many times, and I brought this up several times, the livestream has to work. It has to. Uh, I, I understand we used to use Zoom and I don't know why we just don't go back to that because it's, I think it's more straightforward. So the last time I came, which was a couple of meetings ago, there were a dozen people trying to get on and it just has to work. I mean, people are counting on it to work. Um, you, you know, sometimes there's just no audio, but it, you know, let's, let's get it, let's get it under control. Uh, obviously taxes are on everybody's mind and it's, you know, a bit of a, an issue that's been discussed. So how often does the proposed budget even get passed? I mean, trying to think the last time we saw a school budget where we saw some significant cuts and it's really what people are looking for. We want to see the school board looking to save some money. So the town is definitely hurting from the huge tax increase that everyone's, you know, reeling from. And uh, I would love the school board to look for redundancy, staffing redundancy in particular. Um, you know, where can those difficult cuts be made? And it's, obviously, it is a very uncomfortable conversation, as Kim said, but at this point, it's something that really has to be done, right? We have to start looking and saying, you know, is critical and who is not and where can we save the town some money? And then when we give them that proposed budget, the town sees that good faith effort to make a cost reduction and they say, hey, let's pass it this time. Uh, and I, you said no talking about the high school contract. I find that odd. Um, I don't like that. This is a full house tonight. These people are here for a reason because they want to talk about it. So moving it until after you discuss it, that's, that's why they're here. All right, so give the town what they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to review of the proposed high school agreements. Oh, agenda review, I crossed it off already. I just, we need to have a facilities conversation about the part of our, our system. So we'll put it as H, facilities review? Sure. And then we also need, um, not public or small letter A. Does anyone else want to add anything to the agenda?
Um, I'd be willing to weigh in potentially on the, you know, the current tax situation in town. Certainly didn't look like I'm gonna have a full, large conversation.
I think it's a good idea.
Understanding that I didn't prepare, I don't think I was really fully prepared to have a deep conversation exactly with tax rates, state fund, all that, but we can have a high level conversation as to.
Okay, I will add as I, tax rate discussion.
Is this year for the facilities discussion?
Just up four. Anything else anyone would like to add to the agenda? Okay, so now we will move on to the proposed high school agreements. Can we get the um, presentation? I made a presentation. News to everybody, surprise. Um, so I'm gonna do just a very brief overview and then I will obviously let the high school negotiations committee weigh in with anything else that they would like to add. Um, but the presentation might be the most helpful. Now, you know, okay. Dave, would you mind keeping my eye on the camera to make sure it doesn't?
I might break it.
Don't touch it. Anything. Out if I'm not paying attention.
Anything misses you?
Just press everything until something.
I refocus.
Have the one that's already highlighted white. I did. Usually shows up in here, so. It's loading, that seems promising. Okay. So, okay, so this is um, proposed high school agreements, how we got here and what is being proposed. This is just a timeline and I know the font is very small, so I apologize for that. Um, but just sort of an overview of this year. Um, March 26th was Boating Day. The town rejected the Concord High School contract and voted in favor of an advisory warrant article to enter into contracts with more than one school for the purpose of school choice. The first school board meeting with the new members, which is the three of us here, um, was on April 5th. Danielle and Ellen were appointed to the negotiations committee at that meeting day. Um, in, on May 17th, we sent a survey to fifth through eighth grade families regarding their preference for high school. Um, the results were sixty-one percent picked Cobran as their first choice, thirty percent picked Concord, six percent Pembroke, seven percent Pinkerton, and one percent Dover. And I know that those numbers add up to more than a hundred. Um, but a lot of people picked more than one or the, the numbers got a little bit funky, um, but that's the general sort of gist of what people selected. Um, and then between May and June, we started negotiations with Cobran and Concord, which were the two most requested schools. July and August, there was ongoing negotiations with Cobran and Concord and then the committee explored adding Pembroke um, to the list of schools to add another option. On August 16th, we had a high school options presentation. Um, we really wanted to put that out to the community to get feedback um, on what people thought about the negotiations so far. We got a lot of feedback and the negotiations committee pursued further negotiations. September, October, ongoing negotiations with Cobran, Concord, and Pembroke. Um, agreements drafted by the negotiations committee and reviewed by legal. The draft agreements were then submitted to Cobran, Concord, and Pembroke. Um, November, December, ongoing negotiations and contract revisions with Cobran, Concord, and Pembroke. School ranking survey was sent out a week or two ago for eighth grade families so that we could figure out real numbers for the budget. Um, we wanted to know, you know, where you would send your child tomorrow so that we can put this in the budget. Fifty-six percent chose Cobran, forty-four percent chose Concord, and zero chose Pembroke. And it brings us to today, December 6th, where the school board is set to vote on the proposed agreements. So just to bring everyone back to the August presentation, we had presented a few different options. Um, option A was uh, slightly cheaper, but had a minimum amount or had a minimum amount of students that would need to go to Concord. Um, then we had option B, which was no minimums to any of the schools and it was more expensive, but it was unclear if CRTC was gonna be included in that for Concord. Um, we got a lot of feedback, which was amazing. We are very happy about that. And then we, uh, the negotiations committee pursued further negotiations. This is it, current proposals. So I'll give everyone a second to sort of take it in. The, all three contracts are quite similar in terms of the terms. So no minimums, no maximums for any of the schools. CRTC is included for Concord and Pembroke. No applications are required to any of the schools, so students can just register wherever they would like. The term of the, of all three agreements is three years. Um, Cobran has an option to renew for two years. Concord and Pembroke have the option to renew for one year. And then based on the survey um, that we sent out a week or two ago, we are estimating twenty-seven students going to Cobran and twenty going to Concord. And so the cost of those, of the tuition for that class only is, is the bottom line there. I'll give everyone just a second before we, before we switch, in case anyone wants to look at it more. The costs per student um, are at the top. That does not include special ed costs and does not include things like transportation. All right, next slide. So just to remind everyone what the town approved in March. This was the advisory warrant article that passed seven eighty to six thirty-one. And it was um, that the Deerfield School District entered into contracts and tuition agreements with more than one public high school for the purpose of accommodating high school choice and that they will budget and pay for the full tuition for students to attend an approved public high school of their choice. Um, I think the proposed agreements satisfy uh, the language of the warrant article that was approved by the town. Next. Um, to be determined if the agreements are approved by the school board tonight. Uh, the board will need to determine if and how the agreements will be presented on the ballot and if they're gonna be approved by the voters. Um, if the agreements are placed on the ballot and approved in March, the board could then submit them to the Department of Education for approval so that one or all or several of the schools could be considered our school of record. If the agreements are placed on the ballot and rejected by the town in March, the school board would need to enter into short-term agreements for the current eighth grade class who will already be registered um, at their chosen school and then we'll have to figure out another plan for the, you know, going forward. Um, I am gonna put this presentation on our, on the SAU website, on the town website, and, but I'm gonna update it with the budget impact of this, but I don't have those numbers right now. So after tonight's meeting, um, we should be finalizing the budget, so I will update that slide with the budget impact of the agreements. Do you guys like to add anything?
Um, no, but I think the only thing to keep in mind is with the, like, the Concord amount, that's also what we would be paying for doctors, juniors, and seniors. There was that impact as well.
Um, I do want to thank both of you, the negotiations committee, for all the hours that you've spent on this issue, thinking about it, negotiating, um, receiving lots of feedback, and also to Patty. receiving lots of feedback, um and also to Patty, who has spent many, many hours dealing with with these agreements. So we will, unless, oh, you guys aren't good to say, because you aren't on the committee. Do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Okay.
No. We will um open public comments again. We will still have the three-minute um timeframe that we're usually looking at for public comments, but if anyone would like to come up, you are welcome to.
I'm really glad the meeting has helped. Thank you, all of you, for getting this foot in the door. I think it's huge. I don't think the numbers are that crazy. That's what we were expecting. I think this is what our high schoolers deserve, um is to have these options, especially looking at the numbers where there was such a high amount that you want to go to Co-Brown. Um, I really appreciate that. My question would be what would be the plan for any of the students that currently go to Concord and would want to switch? Um, I'm not sure whether or not they're stuck underneath that con- contract. Originally, I thought they were stuck underneath that contract price, but Ellen just said that this would be their price, so I don't know if that means some of them. I'm I'm sure most of them would not want to move, but I'm sure that there are a few that would. So I'd be interested to know um how you'd be able to accommodate those.
Yes, to be determined.
Thank you.
More North Road, um if you draft a warrant article that has these stipulations, it'll pass. This is what the town's been asking for for years now. I mean, generations have been looking for exactly this. Uh, so if you put it on there, it'll pass.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to thank you, I mean, you listened to what residents in town wanted for their kids, and you negotiated a much better deal with Concord, getting CRTC included. That's huge. And to be be able to provide Co-Brown, Concord, or Pembroke as options is brilliant. So now I hope I'm not putting the cart before the horse. I know you still have to vote on these and hopefully they'll they'll pass. Um, you have the option of signing these without putting them on the warrant articles, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I would recommend um that you do so because you have such a clear mandate and because we are so late in the game right now with current students that are at Concord that will be affected by this, and you're eighth graders. It's up for, you know, renewal and discussion in a year or in three years. Um, that's not a lot of time. So if the town decides they want to take another path, they certainly can, but I'm not sure, given how late in the game we are, that I would put it to a warrant article, quite honestly. I think the town has voted time and again on school choice and shown a preference for it, so, but um it's been a tough road. You've listened to a lot, and I thank you. I know you did a lot of hard work. If you could come to the table with this and these options is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby Anne Dusty, Five Brown Road, um thank you again. Like I said, I actually I disagree with the last commenter. I think you should do the warrant article. It's just to check your ballot, you know, make sure you're checking everything off the list. I really hope you believe in the work that you've done here. You've worked so hard for it and you've given people, I I I don't wanna say this over and over again, because I've said it a million times, but we pay about nineteen thousand for every kid to go here at D C S, not every kid. The average child that goes to D C S, you pay about nineteen thousand anyway. So to cut them at the knees when they go to high school is just not smart. That's when all the, you know, more mental health issues come into play and puberty and and everything, so I really hope that when you're wording the warrant article, that you believe in the work you did and you don't set yourself up for failure. So just keep positive, work so hard for this, and even kids that don't have, oh, just in case, even people that don't have children going into high school are supportive of this. So I hope you know how important the work is, and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nancy Shute, Pleasant Hill Road, I won't be popular for what I'm gonna say, so I'll put it right out there. You deserve more than thank yous for what was said about not listening to the town when, obviously, all along you were. And through negotiations, you can't say everything, but obviously you were listening and you were doing what the town, so I think you deserve more than thank yous. I also just listen to people say, need to find ways to cut, need to find ways to cut, need to find ways to cut. The cuts are gonna happen here at D C S. I understand. I found out a little bit more about how the default budgets and stuff work, and Zach informed me that no, the additional costs won't necessarily come directly from the budget, which I thought it would. But how are we ever gonna get warrant articles passed? How are we going to when right there and then you are seeing an increase? And way back then, my notes from earlier that I was going to say, which are now out. There was a vote of people saying they supported choice, but they were concerned about the increase. We just got nailed with a tax bill. This is gonna be one-line item of a budget. My concern, I am fine with choice, but my heart and soul is here at D C S as well. This is where I spent so much of my time, and I'm very concerned about what's gonna happen here at D C S. So you wanna spend the money for this, great. I have, education's extremely important to me for kids, all kids, K through twelve.
Thank you.
Don Goman again. Wanna thank two ladies who did the extra work and go to all the different schools and the hours and what have you. I was one of the uh two people that did, folks did, to go around, talk to the school boards, principals, what have you. For the original contract with Concord. I'm gonna be perfectly blunt with you. If I was on this school board right now, I would put out a statement that this hasn't got a snowfall's chance in hell of passing, and I would start seriously thinking about what's the next step after it fails. If it passes, fine, but I would really seriously be saying to myself, what's the next step when it fails? There are a lot of angry people in this town. And they don't wanna hear it. Now, I don't think that's a reasonable approach. I want to, I would love to hear it. I would love to have some dialogue with it. I'd love to have, talk it over, what have you. But I really think, after watching this, by the way, is there a copy of that available tonight?
Not tonight. We're gonna publish it tomorrow.
Publish tomorrow, okay. I'd like to get a copy of it.
Sure.
So here's the thing. I think if I was gonna sum up my comments, I would say this. The only chance you have of passing this is if you get that information out to all the people. Posting it on Facebook is not the answer. Sending it out to this, that is not the answer. If it was me, I'd have about a thousand copies of that. I'd be standing at the dump on Saturday morning, passing them out to everybody who went to the landfill. Uh, that might get you a shot at it, but anyhow, those are my comments on the proposal, and thank you again for all your extra work, because I know exactly what point is at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments about the? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Libby. I can, I can do a PowerPoint if that helps. So we need to potentially get contracts voted on.
Yes.
Do you, should we do them all separately, or um I just wanna fill the board in. You had two minor items that you asked authored with, you weren't quite finished with negotiations, but they want to hold this meeting up. So I did get clear and also verbal confirmation that we were able to make the edit that we wanted to, but we didn't get that done in time for this meeting, but I just want you to know that I think we're all set. And then you're, you can take them all at once, or you can take them separately, whatever the board wishes.
You're gonna package it as one.
I would recommend doing all of this.
Okay. Yeah. I will make a motion to approve the three agreements for the warrant article. Well, that has to be.
You have to do an agreement for the kids this year too, right?
I think the warrant article is a separate discussion or putting it on the warrant.
Right.
So I will make a motion to sign the contracts tonight.
Concord's not ready to sign.
Okay, well, it's ready. What motion should I make? Yeah, I will make a motion to approve the three high school agreements as outlined and as written currently. Any discussion? Yes, please.
Uh. Having been working on this for quite some time and having uh received the public comments up up to last year's vote, and then public comments this year, received emails, comments tonight. Obviously, it's a mess, and I think I'm glad that we're reaching the end, and that's very exciting. And I, and I'm gonna vote for this, but but our last speaker, I think, really made a key point here that um the reason that the contract looked the way it did last year was not because we were trying to, I'm speaking for myself, negotiations as well. We were not trying to disadvantage our students in this town. We were not trying to harm them in any way. That was not our goal. I feel like I should say, you know, I have to say, obviously, that to me is obviously part of but uh but at the same time, to also value um the the impact of taxpayers in this town, and being one myself, a parent and a taxpayer. And um, and so clearly, the town did not feel that way. Clearly, the town um wanted school choice, um and the the cost to the to the taxes was not um the I will, I would argue that they voted, it was an informed vote, and they, that was the way they voted last year. And uh, I mean, I don't, I'm not, I can't assume that that they either did know or didn't know, you know, did we do diligence to publicize it? Thinking back to the last year, I think we did. And so I'm looking at this from the perspective that it was an informed vote and the town wanted choice. And uh, and we have our tax bill now. And when it sounds like we're gonna approve this, it goes through. That is going to be another significant tax impact that will be felt next year at this time. Um, and so what we were saying last year is that school choice is not um free or cheap or easy. And um, and so we voted as a town to put the bill, and that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna put the bill. I guess we'll see what the vote in March looks like, but uh I will vote for it now, but um, but the town voted to raise the taxes. And that's what we said last year, and uh that's what we're looking for too.
Thanks.
That was it. So my procedural question. Assuming we pass our contracts tonight, I anticipate that will, those numbers are what we the budget of the fall. So from a financial standpoint. We're talking somewhere to the tune of about roughly nine bucks, eight hundred K.
He's budget tonight to go through with it.
Additional expenditure.
I was gonna say additional.
Additional expenditure for for the cost of choice. I don't want, I don't think the board could obligate the town to that. I think the town should drive the office to do it. There's been a ton of feedback, or selectmen side of it, there's feedback tonight. I've heard feedback outside the meetings. There's a concern from from people in this community about the tax bills. This is another dollar plus that we're looking at in taxes. Top-ups and other expenditures that we have. Much as easier to to read. I have a hard time reconciling two separate warrants. A warrant article from a year ago that says we want school choice. I don't know how to reconcile that against another article a few years prior, as we're figuring out for this. It said we support choice with about four thousand dollars. Here's the use, four thousand. Right now, we have exactly those two. So I certainly think the taxpayers need to weigh in. It, school choice, if it's in the budget, one for, right, it's there financially, it's in. But I think the community needs to refer to that. If they don't refer to it with a positive vote, well, maybe this wasn't responsible, so they contradicted themselves. So I guess that's my, my feedback is, is I think it's from our article. I don't think the board should sign contracts, three-year contracts. Next year is done, right? But we need to let the voters dictate if they want to spend. That's a huge, I mean, it's it's seven hundred, seven hundred and seventy-seven hundred K spending this dollar. Seven five hundred thousand dollars. Grab another sixty-five-seven bus on top of the five hundred three thousand dollars, which is doesn't impact some of us, it certainly does a lot of other people. You just have an opportunity for their voice to be to let them express it.
We, I mean, I don't know that we need to decide about the we get to the warrant articles.
No, but I guess my, I don't think we should sign this. But next year is what it is.
Are you saying not sign anything right now?
I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying the board, the board approves contracts for for the ballot. Right, and I guess that's what I'm trying to clarify. When we approve it for the ballot, we'll draft the warrant article appropriately, and you're asking to sign three contracts tonight.
Which would be regardless of the ballot.
Which would be regardless of the ballot also. So everybody wants choice, well, there's choice.
So Patty, I'm just thinking about, because there are, there are things in in and about how to get out of it. If it's so if it was voted down, would that be a reason not to get out of the contract? I think it would be.
I think, well, it's, it talks about lack of appropriations, but you will have appropriations. I would, I would need to look more carefully. I think that's the reason that you could get out, is that for some reason you need to pay for the tuition, but you will have that in default. I think there's several scenarios when you talk about warrant articles, but I understand what you're saying about clarifying what this motion is about. It's, you know, if you, I think from what I've heard, the intent would be to put all of them together in one article, because you don't want people picking and choosing. You're trying to provide choice, which means you need to package this. because you don't want people picking and choosing. You're trying to provide choice, which means you need to package this. Um, you need to decide if you're asking the voters for permission or asking their opinion for whether or not you're entering into these three agreements. Or is the ask to submit these to the Department of Education so that these three schools are recognized as our school of record? Because you do have the authority to enter into a three-year agreement without going to the voters. But you do need voter permission to, to submit them to the Department of Education for them to say, yes, these are recognized by your voters and by you, and now we will agree that these three schools are your. Yeah, anchor school record, whatever the term is that, you know, there are the three schools you can assign students to.
And, I mean, we went with a three-year too, because it's a, it's a short amount of time, but it's enough to, to look at the results of what's happening and then to plan for it in the future. Because as you know, I mean, look at where we are now. We, we don't want to get there again come, you know, next March and all of a sudden have to renegotiate again.
Oh, I want to add one other thing because it was mentioned earlier. Um, I did talk to the attorney today to get clarification on something that was making me nervous and I think it was Stacy that said it and I had the same feeling that what if something happens and what happens to our eighth graders and I want to make sure whatever you decide that our students are set and, um, they, even if there was a no vote, you, you still have to, you still have to educate your kids.
It's our right.
So it's still okay for us to have an agreement with Co Brown that yes, you're still going to take these twenty, twenty-five or twenty-seven students that wanted to come. So that's, we have to legally provide an education to your students.
I think, I think next year's tuition for the students is very good. Is that kids are going to turn around. Budget, it's done. We know where they're going to be. We can budget appropriately and it's an accurate budgetary number and we have figures from those communities. That expenditure is made next year. I think we need to let the taxpayers really weigh in because I, I don't think everybody in this community, because there's a lot of people in this community that's too big in this conversation. Certainly there's as many people we have. They're going to see this. Maybe they'll see it before him, but if not, they'll certainly see it after tax bill. They're going to go, what the hell just happened? I knew we had a tax bite coming on the town side of it. I've known this been coming for years, but you watch it. Spent, you know, it's going on. Tax rates, I didn't, other users, surplus funds, the taxes, the tax rates. But if the town has to collect twenty million dollars, it has to collect a million dollars. So you know that tax rate was coming. Wasn't a surprise to me, but I think there's a lot of people that hope to come. Today, holy hell, that happened. Those people aren't necessarily here tonight. They're not, they're not tuned in onto the, the functioning of the school. Because maybe they're retired in the case of them out of school. Maybe they're just, you know. I think they have to have an opportunity to weigh in. Because if we sign a three-year contract, we just spent three hundred dollars. That, and again, approximately. Conversation, three hundred dollars. I don't know on the vote, but, but that is certainly. Next year's top. So the last time, that's, that's the type of.
Yeah.
If we, if it gets voted down or whatever, or right now, if we were to admit to it, but not sign the contract, put on the warrant, then is that tuition that came from the agreement, is that based on three years? Or if it's no longer a three-year picture, does that tuition number change?
I mean, it's a good question. Very good question.
Um, and all of this is so uncertain and it drives me crazy, but I think favor this because all along, I think, as I think back to the years we've been working on this, we started from the place of we don't want to go back to twenty years ago when Chairman Gorman was doing the negotiation with all of the schools. There was no school of record and that was what we committed not to go back to. So. As messy as it is, I'm in favor of this, but, uh, because the alternative seems worse. It is priced.
Okay, so the motion, um, I need to think about.
So can I make a amendment to the question?
Yeah.
Don't even.
I mean, you can suggest.
Motion and amendment, right? So I would move the new amendment motion to post the three contracts. The three contracts.
And to the next year, in the terms I want.
I don't know that I'm in favor of that.
Can I just clarify your amendment? Um, when you said prepare the three contracts for a warrant article, are you talking about approval of the school of record or approval of entering into the three contracts?
I think the town.
Last year, you guys did not sign anything with Concord committing anything if it did pass.
Well, we had a year of contract left.
It was committed if it passed. We were committed to.
Right.
Right.
But there was nothing because there was one year of contract. So we weren't, we weren't facing the expiration of the contract. Here now.
Yeah, I mean, I think the.
But our contract with Concord when it expires still allows our students to continue through.
Correct.
We certainly know Bill Brown will have no issue taking students. So this is. Recovered regardless. These students that can conquer. The covering existing. And Bill Brown loves to give those money, so. Those kids are there. Then look so.
That makes me sad.
But, but from an impact for this discussion with those students placed at Pembroke, there's no, there's no impact. So the only benefit to signing the contracts tonight is we.
And we commit ourselves to three years.
And you commit your.
Right.
Three million dollars for the taxpayer. Even though the same taxpayer is four years to present. Four thousand dollars. Four thousand, four thousand dollars. School choice, which is exactly what that is. Almost.
And then the risk is that these tuition numbers, like you said, Nate, are not going to be in place if, if the town votes them down. We still need to provide an education, so we would necessarily need to just enter into contracts, but our budget may not be enough to cover any increased tuition because of the lack of.
Bill Brown's number will change.
Correct.
But they also said they didn't want one year. They wanted at least a three. They actually wanted a five year.
And let the, the community.
Oh.
I. I hear what you're saying and yes, I think it is important that the community weighs in. At the same time, I think it's a really risky decision right now. Um.
You can also let the community weigh in, but it doesn't have to take effect immediately. It can take effect on three-year contracts up.
But I don't know.
Or we can get creative. If the town votes and says that they don't like those, that, those terms, then we get creative and discuss. I don't know what we can do different. I don't know.
So if we sign them tonight. And the other schools then sign them. We are, they are in place even if the town votes no on having them be our school of record.
It depends on how you ask the voter to craft the warrant. It depends on what you're asking the voters to approve. If you're asking them to approve the, those three schools as your anchors, call them anchor schools, um.
Right.
Then it's that you're still free to sign those agreements. If you're asking them, do you want us to sign three agreements? And they say no, then you have to plan for next year. You have to have a plan to get your eighth graders education and then you're sort of back at ground zero, I'd say.
We also are very respectful. There's a legal risk we can say you could have those, these, those schools. Excellent arrangements you made about eBay. It's one of the, which is an issue from the taxpayers versus. And I, I want to, I appreciate everything that's been done, but I am trying to speak for what may be the minority and may not be the minority, but I think there are certainly. At the moment, with the feedback we've gotten about the taxes, they deserve a voice and you thought I have to be their voice. I don't want you to think I don't.
No.
Okay.
She feared it.
Um, if we sign them now for three years, then the voters, voters could nullify that signature.
I don't think so.
No, because we're governing.
You can enter into short-term agreements, yes.
So then you started putting it on the warrant. I think we've already started putting it on the warrant, but only accomplish allowing us to call it a school record.
Correct.
But it wouldn't. Nullify it.
Correct.
Um. Okay, so you being a motion to amend.
Right. It didn't get seconded until I. A lot of things that can say tonight.
I got it.
Sure as hell.
Um.
But again, I, my concern is obligating taxpayers higher than we. Then for years of a very clear total to do. This four years. If last year the warrant article said this. That's not what it says.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I'm sort of struggling with is that we need to educate the current eighth graders, right? So even if the town votes no on all the contracts, like we still have already. All the students that can go there. So it's sort of like, are we listening to the.
They're saying, but then they're just tuition students.
I think the. But not for three years, I guess, is the sort of nuance there. The town isn't approving it for three years potentially.
Would Co Brown have taken twenty-five students regardless of the contract?
I'm sure.
So they're just being tuitioned.
Just be sending them there.
So.
People get to go there.
The voters have to approve it. That's the intent, the intent of the board, right? Would be if the authority of board members placed it on the warrant. The intent is to. Three-year. Voters have to prove it. The years will be tuitioned next year.
So the eighth graders will go there regardless.
Right.
I, I do want to throw out there that the warrant article, one of the things the warrant article said was not only about providing choices and paying full tuition. That was something that people voted for as well.
Yes. I.
I mean, maybe they weren't informed of how much the tuition will be. I think everybody knows Co Brown is, is a lot more.
Right, but I, I don't know that everybody had computed the actual potential.
I hear you, but I don't know that we can, like, like Nate said, can we keep second guessing? You know, he, he made this, say, I'm going to assume that they were informed voters. It's kind of hard to keep going back and guessing how people are going to get. We know that people are going to be upset about taxes right now because of what's just happened.
And it's going to happen again next year.
I, I, I know, but I'm just saying. We did negotiations in good faith based on what we were told that, that people wanted.
Okay. Um, so the current motion is to. The current motion is to approve the contracts, but I'm guessing, I'm not sure what that means now in context of this discussion.
We are leaving it separate from the warrant article. So it was a motion that had nothing to do with warrant articles at this point.
It's the baddest highlight.
That means you don't need a warrant.
Unless you want them to be anchor schools.
Coming in, yeah.
I'm sorry.
The length of the contract is such that we do not need a warrant.
Yeah, I mean, I do think. I almost shouldn't have watched the board of selectmen meeting on Monday.
Once too.
Because I feel like my thinking is a little clouded by everyone's concern about
Sure.
the tax rate.
But that shouldn't be clouding your thinking. That's. And again, those.
Sure.
Right? So again, you, you. Small.
No, but I, I hear what you're saying though. Like I am cautious about obligating the town for three years without them having a say. Right? I mean, but then on the other hand, like if it fails, we still are obligating the town for at least one year, either way.
That part's done.
I know. So, so it doesn't matter.
So, so on that day.
And I think we need to give, I think we need to give families some assurance of what's in the future. I don't think we can keep doing one year, one year, one year. I mean, I think we need to have at least a little bit of time to see how it shakes out.
And that. I worry. I worry about everything. Um, I worry too that if we don't approve it and we wait for the town to, my concern is that that cost is actually going to go up. Not necessarily because of Co Brown, but they could for the other schools too. They're, you know. They, this is what they gave us for the contract. If we don't sign that contract, can they jack up?
I won't jack up.
Yeah. Just send them all to Pembroke.
They're welcome. They'll take care of the taxes.
I think we need to vote on just figuring the contracts. Which was your original motion.
You just.
Nothing but.
We're just tying the hands for the next three years.
Yep.
Driving around town asking for their five hundred, eight hundred dollars a year, a thousand dollars for every house in town.
I mean, I guess I am also thinking that like if the majority of town does support choice, right? They voted for it, assuming they knew that it was going to have a tax impact, then what is the harm of putting it back on the warrant article and letting
Letting.
the same majority vote on it again.
That's just to do what they went and did it. They figured out this is a cost and not a benefit. And I think that part of our job as well is to look at the people who come to speak and attend our meetings. People who come to speak at the board of selectmen meetings and recognizing that they each represent a larger group out there, but it's like, how big is that? That group? And does what we saw at the board of selectmen is that represent or, or indicate that people have been okay with the way things were kind of floating along. Now they've seen the tax impact of, you know, whatever the decisions were over the past couple of years. Now they're paying more attention to them. Change about that. I think that's really something.
I think, I think it's got to go. I like the warrant article idea.
Um.
It's tuition next year anyway and money starting to.
Yeah, I mean, I think they would. At Concord. Well, they can if they, if we're voting on the contract that they presented to us.
Yeah, they know that our contracts have to be, which is what last year they were. They know.
I would say during negotiations, it was represented that the board was going to be exercising their authority to enter into, that's why we did it for three years. And that their assumption, we, I think it was a newer development in the process that we would, we said we wanted them to go to the Department of Education for. So I don't know. I don't know what the response would be from the other district.
I think that your assumption is correct that, you know, Pembroke is charging for people, Co Brown is charging their cost. Um, Concord had a sort of an escalator based on the average increase over the past few years. And that if they could choose to change that calculation or that escalator based upon their concerns that they would be able to predict how many students they would have and what the possible people would be if they didn't know how many students they were going to have. I would say that would be variable.
But at the end of the day, that's much, that potential is smaller.
But I don't, I don't understand how they could do that if we have a contract from them already with the tuition laid out.
If, if you, if, if, yeah, if you, that's a three-year agreement that you have with them right now. That's the agreement they bring to. If you go back and say, never mind, we only want a one-year agreement. They don't honor what they, what you've settled on for three years.
Right, like if the town votes no.
Right, or if you decide not.
But the amount couldn't change before voting.
Correct.
You guys.
Okay. Um. I will. amend my motion. You don't have to, and then you're second if you don't. I will amend my motion that we place the three contracts on the warrant article for approval. Isn't that what, that's, oops. Yeah, but.
Personal.
But he don't, no one will do that. Okay, he's just going, try it again. Yeah, try it again. Does the original seconder need to also?
That's just a new motion.
I see, okay.
So if you're amending your motion, I will second your amendment.
I will amend my motion.
I will vote for the motion.
You'll vote on the amendment?
No, I'll vote for the, I'll vote for.
Okay, so, okay, so I'm a little confused, let's just kind of back up a sec. So if we do it this way, we're saying that are we going to sign the contract or we're not going to sign the contract until the governor?
That means we're not sending it tonight, is what this amendment would mean.
And that means you don't, you don't sign it until March?
After the voters have changed.
That's why I feel like that's just really opening up a big can of worms.
Yeah, but it's not opening any cans of stuff with Co Brown or with Pembroke. It's with Concord that it's.
It's Concord.
The financial, the concern anyhow that we have, Concord, the rate changing another year, say year two. And signing out, you can do a three-year contract.
Maybe I'm just a ridiculous optimist, but I just feel like if, if the town didn't approve them as a school of record, I feel like we could be creative and try to figure out.
You, you don't have a choice.
Right, we, no, no, I'm not saying to get out of the contracts or anything like that. I'm saying, like, I think we could be creative and try to figure out how to save the town money.
I don't, we can't, because we would already have signed the contract.
And, and so when we look at the, to, to talk about the budget perhaps, things would be, things that are very difficult to do anything with budget, the tuition bill shows up, we have to pay it. Special ed costs, we have to pay. The flexibility that carries weight in our budget is inside this building. Biggest place, I had you correctly wrong, but the place where we can have a positive, I'm going to call it a negative impact, but an impact that reduces the overall budget is, is a reduction of staff, which means we are moving programming, increasing expenses. That is it. Because the staff is paid exactly what the, what we're supposed to pay, their CBA's. And tuition bills come from any high school, pay it, have a choice. When the special education costs are inferred, we pay them. And then the rest is discussed. So the only other place where we can have a positive financial impact at this point juncture in time is the cost of high school education in that contractual cost. And again, sperm hung up, don't spend $800,000 for just. Having a hard time, right, it's found to two things. If people are screaming for cash relief, you aren't delivering it today. But they may really say, hey, we need you to deliver it tomorrow. The money spent next year, anyway, that burden has been posed on taxpayers. We got to give them some sort of offering, a chance to weigh in or a chance to validate the actions of this board.
And is the warrant article going to put together the idea of the contracts as well as a school record? But now you have two things there, we need a school record.
But that's what, the three contracts are your three schools.
I know, but let's say, let's say the contracts get voted down, what's our school record? We need a school record.
Do we have to ask the voters for them to be the school record?
Yes. The only way the Department of Education will recognize a school as your school is if the voters in your community ask for it. But if you put those together, the school record and the contract, then you might lose the school record as well if they vote down the contract. And that's a problem.
Yeah, I just. I am uncomfortable with with not giving people the choice. I think there is this narrative that the school board does things without getting input or feedback, or that we're not being open and transparent. And I don't, I worry that just signing for three years without giving people the opportunity to vote on it will.
We had discussions pertaining to that. What would you do with the contract? Short-term contract, now granted that it was no necessarily discussion fair, but power to figure out solutions. This feedback wasn't, wasn't possible. Now, this is a different situation. Any feedback against that largely did. They asked for, say, right, they're good. I've got, again, that just, this is a huge ask, will you have, every time you borrow a huge ask, and if you, they're comparing us to the. The taxpayers have not. Said, fine, we've moved on. This is, this is a significant. Some increases that you can't put in special education. But CBA is. So I support the amended motion because I think that is going to be what gives taxpayers.
Any other discussion?
On the amendment.
On the amendment. Okay. Motion to approve the amendment to the original motion. Which places contract on the warrant article, made by me, seconded by Nate.
It implied that Nate is signing it afterwards, pending the.
Yes. Okay, so this is just a motion to make the amendment to the motion. Okay. All in favor of the amendment? I.
No. Answer? Yes, we do. No.
Okay, so now the motion on the table is to. No, one, three and two. So now the motion on the table is to approve the agreements to be put on the warrant article. Any discussion?
You say approve, you don't need like sign it. Proved the contract.
For the warrant article, yeah. Any discussion?
I was against the amendments. I think it should be a three-year contract.
Well, it still would be.
After the voters.
If the voters agree, yes.
I mean, I just, I guess I just keep going back to if this is what the town wants, and they have indicated they do, I guess I don't see the downside of putting it on the warrant article so that we are not obligating the town to multiple million dollars without their validation. Express validation, that it was going to cost money. I, you know, I've heard comments from people saying, school choice was not going to cost any additional money. And while that was never something I said when I was running, and I don't think it was anything the school board ever said, I think people did think that was the case, so. I think if there is a firm majority of people who are in, are in favor of school choice, then they will vote for it. Yeah.
What would this look like? Would this look like what the CBA with the parents is going to look like, or it's going to lay out the cost? Yeah, coming for this.
Or. I don't think we have the cost for all three years because they're dependent on the contracts and the expenses
So.
of those schools.
From a warrant standpoint, doesn't necessarily show a cost because the cost is already. This is a warrant article that doesn't have a, a cost reflected to it because the reflected costs have already been passed into the.
Will we have a reflective cost for the next year? That would be the cost for the next year, what's going to cost for the next year.
Well, we can't predict that because it's, the calculation for the tuition in the contracts is based on expenses and.
A three-year contract with these three schools.
And have them be our school record, or would that be a separate question?
No, that would be part of that.
I am not even going to advise you on how you would write this warrant article. No part of it. I would absolutely have the interviewer try to write this article.
It's, the financial impacts are. Discuss this, hopefully it's, the financial impact should already be embedded. So it's hard, and, and because it's contractual conditions.
It isn't.
It's in default.
Because we have to. It's in the default, not because of the contract, but because we have to educate our students.
And our advice was to put the number in the default that was based on real information, which is why we did the survey. And put the number of students.
A good faith estimate of what it would cost to provide high school education to our students, which we had based on the three-year. I think one other thing to discuss is if the town does not approve the contracts, would we then be unable to enter into contracts with these schools? Because, you know, on a, like, on a typical warrant article, if it is voted down, then you're prohibited from doing that thing for a year. So that would be bad.
Trudy Graham? I, the only conversation I had, I didn't, I didn't foresee it going in this direction. So the only conversation I had was if you asked for the voters to approve the schools of school of record, and they said no, would you still enter into the agreements? And the answer was yes. I didn't contemplate this, this exact scenario, so I wouldn't want to give you advice. Can ask for legal advice and take the action at the next meeting on the warrant article, but that leaves no decision tonight with the agreements.
So to that extent, if the intent is to push this forward, let's just say intent is to push it forward from there. Clarify some things. We can still finish the budget, because we have, we're going to hold the budget. Everybody has a little bit of time. A little bit if you want, maybe just finish. Warrant articles.
Yeah, I mean, I guess. That about kids registering, the summer school, they're still satisfied. Well, I think we were, we were putting students toward the registration process with the understanding with the three schools we were negotiating that we're moving forward with three-year agreements.
Right.
So I need to get reach back out to those schools and let them know if you decide to take a different course and that they're still comfortable or just around with these students.
I don't think you have a hangup with Co Brown.
Oh, but, I mean. We negotiated really hard for this, and I feel like this is really good faith, this three years, and you're just like throwing it all, you know, out right. Day you get the bathwater, so I'm just very concerned. I feel like we have a solution, yes, I know taxes are a big deal. It is just a three-year thing, is there something that we can look at in the school? You know, here, are there other ways that we can reduce money? I don't know. I, I know, well, 800,000? I, I don't know. I just, I just feel like we've got, it really took a lot of work to get to this point, and I feel like it's just being thrown out now, and it upsets me. And, and I think it's just three years, it's not like we're, we're not, you know, we're not committing to a ten-year contract or anything like that. We can start looking at it in two years. People don't like it, town doesn't like it, okay, we'll look at something else, it might be cheaper.
I mean, I think sort of one way that we could deal with the tax blow, and I don't know that it would be applicable next year because I don't anticipate we will have surplus or like a large amount of surplus, but we could certainly consider adding a trust fund for high school tuition so that if we had to withdraw money from the trust fund to make up some of the difference.
Can I skip ahead on your dumbbell a little tiny bit?
Please.
So your newest fiscal year update is negative 312.
Oh.
Almost $313,000, so I just would not talk about.
So we're having surplus.
We're having surplus right now. Count on a surplus.
No, I, that's what I said, I don't think there will be a surplus this year.
Correct. But we, we're getting weekly day-to-day changes in this budget this year, so I just don't know. December now.
You have a motion on the table?
I do have a motion on the table.
So you're often going to be at this. I can do this. More continuous discussion.
I feel like I'm the deciding vote, which feels bad.
So one thing, if you table till next meeting for the, for the final decision, I'm not even going to execute it. It's an opportunity for us to do some more.
If we table it, how's that going to affect what's going on right now? I mean, how's, you know, how's the school's going to feel? And how are the parents going to feel? I mean, Concord is waiting for tonight, they haven't taken action because they were waiting for us for tonight to get back to.
I, I am concerned, I know we don't often hear it at these meetings, but I know that a lot of people do really like and support Concord. So I would not want to damage our relationship with them also by not doing what we have discussed, that's what I'm worried about. Okay, I'm going to withdraw my motion. Too bad.
Well, they would have to agree, but now it's no. Second is back over to Ellen then. Because Ellen's, it's not mine, is that correct?
The first, Ellen seconded.
We're back to the original motion, which was Kendra, motion seconded by Ellen.
We have to vote on the amendment, right?
Yeah, we did vote on the amendment.
Right.
We voted to amend the original. I couldn't have made this more messy.
But we haven't voted on that motion within this.
Correct.
So that's where we are.
Yes. Okay. I will. I'm going to start this over, I'm going to move to withdraw the motion that's currently on the table. Ellen agrees as my second. Would anyone else like to make a motion? Anyone on the negotiations committee?
Well, the, the motion that we started with was to approve the contracts, as they are. Not talking about warrant articles or anything like that, just approving the contract. So I move that we approve the contracts.
Second that motion.
Well, you have a second on drawing the motion, but we need to vote on people drawing or no?
Oh, yeah. We have some. We have to.
If I miss a step.
Draw.
If it's second, we have to vote to the draw.
Okay. Going, this is going deep. This is going deep. I really can't, I haven't really, really bungled this process.
We'll find our way out, it's fine.
Okay. All those voting in favor of my withdrawing of my motion, amended motion. I. Okay, three, two. Now we can move to an emotion.
It's a lot easier when everybody just agrees.
Well. That would be easier. Okay, would you like to make an emotion?
I move that we approve the three agreements. I second that motion.
Okay, back to discussion. Anything else?
I don't want to do the discussion.
Yeah.
We've been dying all day today to be like. I'm gonna throw a new.
Go.
All right.
How about?
So. Also, I want to do this.
I think you do.
All right. The community needs to weigh in. That's the way I feel, obviously. We're concerned about relationships. That's what I'm hearing, right? Damaging that by waiting till March to let. I want to make sure I say it this right. So if that's the concern, why don't we look at putting two warrant articles on the ballot? The warrant articles, the three contracts we discussed. Three articles.
You do you, but.
The three articles we discussed. Money's already in the budget, it's done, it doesn't cost. That's the first. Community has an opportunity to weigh in and validate the decision and work and school choice. If they don't, you give them opportunity. That's how we ask them.
What's new?
How the community has choice. Getting tools, playing school choice and tasks associated with it. If they want an off-ramp, we give them an off-ramp to say, pull it. No one's spending. Let's. Back up.
I don't know, I don't think that's very good faith.
And I might be talking to the minority of the community. I could be talking to the majority of the community, I don't know. But I'm, I'm certainly talking to people in the community. Just like you, police station, fire station, school issue.
I think, you know, one thing that I keep going back to as we've been dealing with this issue for, for majority of this year is that you know, obviously Co Brown is more expensive, but a lot of the surrounding towns already pay that and they pay the amount that is listed. And I don't, and yes, I think it would be a hard pill to swallow after the events of this month, past month with taxes. But if the surrounding communities can pay for higher tuition, I, I don't know what makes us different in the sense that we shouldn't and that people wouldn't support paying a higher tuition for our students.
With thought process, right? All those other communities have different sources.
That's true.
Based on, right? Tax, we can get into the whole thing about New Hampshire's methodology for generating revenue because it's broken, but.
And school funding.
And school funding, but we don't have enough time tonight. So that being said, you know, again, I'm trying to reconcile to warrant. So, so one warrant article said, don't spend any money in school choice. It's great if it does cost money, but don't spend four thousand dollars ahead. Then a year ago, we said we didn't want school choice and use pay. I don't know where the majority of the voters lie. It's too. So if you guys go along with my stand-ins, voters have choice. If they want school choice, it's already in the budget. It's already on default. It's there, it's done. Vote for Article, whatever number it is. And if you think about it with your heart of hearts and you don't want it, vote for it. And then I don't care whether it happens. But at least you gave people opportunity to weigh in. And it may only be thirty or forty percent of people, but it's people that show up to tell it. But you've given them the opportunity to weigh in on it. And I think it's unfortunately good because there's people screaming about their tax bills right now, there's people screaming about being on a fixed income and not knowing how they're gonna pay their taxes, feed their health, feed their family, all the other things they have to do. Twenty-five or a failure, forty percent increase doesn't impact maybe a lot of the families in this town or a lot of the people in this town, a lot of the customers in this town. There certainly are people that are impacted. And again, it's on standing room, being the voice for them at the moment.
I agree with you. I mean, it's not, I'm worried about the tax hike too, but I also think that we need to commit to something. And what we're committing to is if we sign these contracts, the, the first year is done. It's gonna be in the, we ain't doing anything about it. We'd be committed for two more years. We can change it. If everybody's upset about it, that's two years that we've committed to. And I feel like we're just, you know, we're like, oh, we're gonna give people something for one year and then boom, we're gonna take it away?
Right.
Well, I, I just don't think that's a long enough time to really even try this out. It's like saying, we're just, it's almost like saying we don't really don't want choice, we're just gonna. I mean, I hear what you're saying. If the voters vote for it, it's voters voting for it, but we're not even giving it a shot.
Well, we are giving the voters.
No, we're not, we're giving it, we're doing one year and then we're, and then if we're. It's.
And if the voters like, the default is choice. Choice, choice is there, it's fault.
I hear you, but there's a lot of other things. Where, where your, your whole thing, your whole view right now is on the taxpayers. And I, I get that, I understand that. But there's a lot of other things involved. There's families that are involved that need to know what's gonna happen in a few years. There's the schools that we're building relationships with.
And I.
And we have to try it out and see if it works. I mean, a lot of families think they really want Co Brown. Maybe they'll go to Co Brown, they'll change their mind. I don't know. We haven't even given it a shot.
But I would say the families that are at Co Brown, stay at Co Brown, they'll, whatever.
But you're seeing all these other schools that, you know, like that waste survey. They're all figuring out whatever we're gonna do to issue, they're gonna be falling along on it and you're.
And then it should pass. It should pass with flying colors. When it passes with flying colors. Because it should, right? Based on the most recent feedback we've gotten, the based on the most recent feedback we've gotten, it should pass, right? Put it on the ballot, it passes with flying colors, it asks eighty, ninety percent of the voters to vote. So what do we have to lose other than taking sure we're right?
Relationships with schools.
I don't.
Parents feeling uncomfortable because you've got the seventh graders, they're gonna be worried about it.
And they'll know, they'll know in March definitively what's going to happen.
Well, it's opening up the door to us having to do all this all over again. Which is not a fun thing to do.
I, I've done it.
And we'll have, and we'll have burn bridges with schools.
I mean, it's also feasible. Let's say we put both of those on the warrant article. Choice, Concord contract. It's feasible that both of those fail.
And then the communities made their decision, they want to go back to.
But then what, then what? Like.
To wish, we just have tuition agreements until.
The same thing.
But then like that defeats the argument of increased taxes because if you let people go wherever you want, like we have no control of the taxes.
Communities' decision. If they've definitively had choice, right? They want choice? Give them, give them choice. Choose to protest. Have it, it's already in the budget, it's in the budget, it's no tax impact beyond what's already in the budget. Take it all. Hope it was a new.
Yeah, I think it's just opening us up to too much uncertainty.
Well, I always really hope I even to open myself up.
The level, that's, you'll get it.
God, yeah.
Yeah. Good job. Um. I still, I mean, I still struggle with obligating the town for multiple years. However.
I mean, we've been talking about this.
We haven't talked about it so long time.
All of a sudden at the last night. What's that, what's that expression on the football? Anyway, I feel like, I feel like we're, we have been talking about this for months and months and months, three-year contract, and all of a sudden, boom, we're not gonna do it. I think the town.
So why don't I do?
Having a problem.
So we can either put the new back and then. I would make an amendment to your motion. To place.
I didn't make a motion this time.
Um, I did.
Ellen.
Yes.
So I would move that we amend. This, this could live or die right now. Add Ellen's motion. Place the three contracts on the warrant as well as the contract on the warrant. For the voters to decide what they want to do in March.
I'm voting on that.
Thank you.
Any, so this is a, this is a motion to amend. Motion. No.
Decided to put it on the warrant article.
To place the three contracts on the warrant article as well as.
Long since. And for discussion.
As a separate.
As a separate warrant article. And for discussion, the way that I would propose it even. Again, three contracts are in the budget. It's done, it has no financial impact. Because it's already in the budget. Community truly wants it, it's gonna pass with flying colors. Community doesn't want it, we give them the opportunity and offer them financially to go to contract. Obviously, we'd have to find out from Concord, but to go to Concord play along. But I also think, given the circumstances, Concord probably say, yes, we'll wait till March and see. Do you think? Concord was willing to allow us to place last year's contract on the ballot as well. Community now has choice. They have absolute choice. You can choose contract. You can choose choice. You can choose the financial and tax of choice, or you can choose the financial impacts of it. Taxpayers weigh in, they want choice, go for it. They want a contract, go for it. And at that point, whatever it is, it is, the taxpayers owe the ramifications you to weigh. And vote.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to amend Ellen's motion.
Place two warrants.
To place two warrant articles. All in, yeah. Do you have a different more discussion? I'm gonna have to repeat it again, I'm not happy about that.
I, I have a problem with doing this without, uh, you know, checking with Concord. Or like. Well, and, and so, hang on, please, hang on a second, please. So I, I agree that a concern is, is, is our relationship. And you use as an example, I mean, we have had a relationship with Concord. So in terms of, I, I don't, we don't have a relationship with Co Brown to damage. We have no kids at P A. But I do love the kids. Right, right.
I love them no matter where they are.
The relationship we're talking about damaging is Concord. That's the only relationship we have at the moment for this one year.
Yeah.
And so would this avoid the damage of the relationship? Of the relationship? At the same time, I feel like I'm uninformed in making it like this.
Right.
This seems like moving all the time.
You smoke.
A sudden new government, hang on a second. Could we get information in two weeks to make an informed assessment? Just a, two weeks, I, I will.
My.
We can vote on the amendment, but I wonder whether two weeks would get us that type of.
Mine's nuke. Blew at the concern. I threw that out there at the concern of science, three-year contract. It's taxpayers. So, and, and hearing your concerns, right? So you're giving the people choice, they want choice, give them choice. Ultimately, that's exactly what that is. That is in its pure simplest form, choice. On the three high schools and negotiating with here are the terms, go. You want it off-ramp, go.
I, um.
And for the, for everybody watching, this is you may agree or disagree, but unfortunately, this is how we have to have these discussions.
And I think, I think your thought, I just want to throw it out there because I'm hearing a little bit. I think your thought is that, yes, the Concord contract was rejected, but was everybody really informed about what the cost would be for choice?
And I've said that in the past on Tottenham based it.
Right, but that's what, I think that's, that's where your thoughts are going.
There, there is, I want the, I want the voters, want the voters to affirm what we're talking about and I want want them, they need to have an off, the, the taxes are gonna spiral out of control if we don't give them an off-ramp. And if, if they, if they move to let the taxes go, I don't give a damn, it doesn't impact me one bit.
I don't think they're gonna spiral out of control, but they'll be, they're gonna be more and they'll stay more.
They're climbing.
Next few years.
And there is, there's no.
Climbing regardless.
Right, but there's no.
Longer contract, they're climbing regardless.
Our two outlets for release be a long-term high school contract like we have proposed or significant staffing cuts at DCS. And I certainly will not get behind significant staffing cuts at DCS. So as far as the school's concerned, which is the largest driver of the town's budget, we have two ways that we can have a positive impact on the town's budget. That's where it happens. And it, it. So let the taxpayers have a choice. One choice, half choice. Decide. Either way, yes or no, it shouldn't be a fight, it shouldn't be an argument, it should be vote. Show up in March. Vote. Everybody shows up, a hundred people, a hundred percent of the voters show up, vote. And then at the end, you know exactly what community stands. I'm done either way, but.
Okay.
So you could, you could vote on the amended motion pending conversation with Concord. If they say no, then it doesn't matter, right?
I think even having that kind of conversation with Concord worries me a little bit. I feel like we are also gonna be sending them into a little bit of whiplash and are we gonna be giving them any kind of false hope?
I.
Well, it's possible, like I said before, that both get rejected and then Concord has zero assurances
Right, I.
of anyone go from there if they don't want to.
I, I don't think. I don't think.
Okay.
Given the circum. Okay. Given the circumstances, I don't think Concord would. Really don't. Now granted, you guys have been talking to him this year, Nate and I talked to him last year. We've all had a chance to get to know him.
I have not. No, no, no.
I don't.
Play by.
I don't think Concord would be offended by the ask. But the other thing this does is it allows us to reconcile with two warrant articles. That's to know you want it.
Okay, so the motion on the table.
Amendment on.
Amendment on the table. Well, the motion on the table is to amend the motion to have two warrant articles, one that has three agreements and if that fails, one that has the Concord contract.
No, I would write it so if it fails, warrant article, whatever, say two or three.
You couldn't have both.
Right.
Okay.
So if.
If it fails.
If warrant article, I'm gonna call it warrant article one for lack of better.
Sure.
If warrant article one fails, do you support if a school just took entering into a long-term contract? But it's written.
And then if that fails.
Then, then. But, but it's written as, so your default, your defaults, warrant article, your default is choice, right? It's already in the budget, it's there, that's the default, it's done. Validate it. If you choose not to validate it, that's, that's the stronger of all statements, right? Then the community is as informed as we can, we can allow them to be. We've given them choice. Now they're informed, they know what the costs of choice are. If they don't validate it, that is the strongest statement they can make. Maybe they signed Concord's contract, approved Concord, maybe they don't approve anything. But, but if they don't validate choice, that's the statement that you're looking for. Because that, that, that's, that's a statement against something. Do I think choice will pass? Probably. But let people have a choice. Just, do you feel deserves school choice?[1783.74] I had to say it once.
Um. I feel like I've personally been flip flopping all over the place tonight, but I hope that people recognize that's because these are hard conversations and they're not, you know, the board is not colluding to do like a particular thing. We come and have open conversations and.
This is how sausage is made.
This is how sausage is made and unfortunately. It takes. Uh, yeah, we get paid zero dollars per year. So just putting that out there, because I'm sure that will be something I hear about.
For anybody to watch.
Oh, I'm sure. I would be very frustrated with this right now.
But most fails or fail.
The motion on the table is to amend the motion to include having two warrant articles. One with the three agreements for choice and the second for a long-term contract with Concord.
If the first.
If the first contract fails. Okay, all in favor of the amendment to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Two, three. Okay, what was the original?
Original motion is just to approve.
Okay, approve the three agreements. Okay. Back to the original motion that I had made and changed and really bungled it up before. Okay.
I'm sorry, this is going to be Ellen's.
Ellen's, Ellen's motion, Danielle's second.
Yep.
Um, motion to approve the contracts tonight. Sign them. Give them back.
I'm going to do one last thing, which which I never need to put and say that we should give this only meeting to hear.
You have nine months. So Patty, if we can take two and let it to two weeks, how, what would that cause?
Is that, is the, I guess I'm just wondering about intent. So you're just
to get feedback from the public.
Community came back in droves and gave you feedback that they wanted the Concord contract.
This is the first time.
Then you would change your mind or.
It's been, the community just heard the details. Maybe the community comes back and says, we really need to, we want, we want to see this. Maybe the community can accept.
I don't know how often, Concord only meets once a month. I don't know when their next meeting is.
Usually in the beginning of the season.
First week, so I'm just, you're, you know, you've got a public hearing with the M B C in January, they'll you don't have a lot of time.
I think we got to get.
Well, it has to be, it has to be two weeks from now. If we do it, it has to be two weeks.
I think we got.
Not be until any longer.
I think we got to let people have a say in this.
I will say that I think we faithfully followed the approved warrant article.
Yeah.
That's who voted for it, to the letter.
Yeah.
Like there was several ways that we could have diverted. I agree with, with Nate that that's unfortunately or fortunately, a byproduct of democracy, that people vote. Whether or not they understand the implications of their vote, I don't know. Where they get the sources of information to vote, I don't know. But I can't assume that people aren't making informed votes.
And other things, I mean, we tried to make this agreement for just only three years. We really tried to keep it for a small amount of time so that we could try it out and see how it works. We, we all know what it was like year to year. It's awful. We don't want that. So at least, but we didn't want to go far, like, like I said, a lot of them wanted five-year agreements. We went, we got them to agree to three-year agreements. I also want to say too, I think, I, I, I understand getting the public's feedback is important. However, on this matter, I think over the summer, we put together a pretty good presentation. It was not exactly what this was, but it was a good indicator of what the increase in money would look like. And we got a lot of feedback from people telling us, even out of those two options, which option they would prefer.
That's true.
Prior to a four and a half dollar, five cent increase.
But again, like that still, to me is still a byproduct of democracy. You are voting every year for things and you don't know what the year ahead is coming. Right? Like, we vote for lots of things and we don't know what things are going to look like year to year. And we, I am strug, I'm obviously struggling with this decision, but um, I think back to when I was running for school board and I said that I would do what the town voted on. And I, one of my campaign promises is that I would honor the vote of the town. And I think that we have done that by doing literally what the advisory warrant article says. So I feel like I'm flip flopping all over the place, but.
Call you the waffler.
Honestly, um, so, yeah, again, to those two things that I have alluded with anyone, I clearly am not.
Tough decision and we see both sides. It's an extremely tough decision. But.
I still don't know what we have to lose by letting the town. I certainly don't know what we have to lose by letting the town. Because based on everything we're saying tonight, choice is going to pass with flying colors anyway, I mean, why is it not?
I think exactly that statement though. I don't know what we have to lose and that's the unknown. It's the unknown of how Concord's going to react. It's the unknown of how the relationship with the other schools are going to react. It's the unknown of how the families are going to react. And I think that is a scary.
So if we, if we break that down, Co Brown's tuition rate is what it is and they'll take our kids. They, for the nine years I've been on this board, Co Brown sends a letter to my house every year, hey, we're looking for kids. They have every year.
Okay. Forget about, forget about all that. We know that, but we're, we're talking about relationship with Concord, relationship with families, relationship with Nate.
And so with Concord. With Concord, if you ask Concord, hey, this is an idea that was floated, will you, are you guys commendable to it?
We've got a lot of Concord, we know.
So I can't, but all I'm saying is, if you go to Concord, hey, we want to give the community a way in, school choice is going to pass, it doesn't matter anyway, fine. Either way, Concord gets something. They're, they're either.
Well, that's not necessarily true.
The two is going to pass. It's either going to.
I don't know.
If it, and if school choice doesn't pass and they don't have anything else to weigh in on, now you have guaranteed uncertainty. Right?
Which could be, high school tries at even more expensive.
You give an option, right? And you have the community says, you know what, we don't want to foot the bill for this and you don't give them plan B. Now you've created chaos. If you give them choice and they say, hey, we don't like this, we, we don't want to pay for it, how about plan B? Well, now you've given them an option. It's a safer, frankly, it's safer than all the other options, other than just signing a contract and committing to community three years with it.
The warrant should be for the.
The motion on the table is to approve the three contracts tonight. Last words, any last word?
Maybe all are nuts.
I maybe not, people can not vote for me in two more years or whenever, me too. Um. And that would be a great way for them to weigh in. Um, but they're stuck with me for a little while. So the motion on the table is to approve the three contracts as currently written. And then we can discuss if we want the warrant article or. School of record later. Uh, okay.
Whatever.
You're done. You're almost about to be done with this.
Listen, I think there's a large group of people in this town that don't agree with this. And I don't think I said.
Well, I think there was. I don't disagree, but there was also a lot of people who didn't agree with the Concord contract. So like, I don't know how to reconcile those.
And we had no feedback from anybody.
Then, then the reconciling is letting them vote. At a minimum, at least let them vote on three contracts. At a minimum, each of them.
I'm really struggling with the idea of putting the town's team's bike on decisions that we have been making for the past nine months.
So you should make a motion to place it on the warrant, because I'm around my motions to make, I am all failed. But you could make a motion to place it on the warrant, which I would support, so that the taxpayers will probably weigh in on another dollar plus for this. Three years. Let them vote.
That's for the future.
Um.
This is one of the most spirited discussions.
That's true. I mean, I know it is preliminary to hope for this, but there was recently a court ruling that said that the state is underfunding education. And they. Yeah, right, yeah, all right. So I, I'm not that hopeful that this will go anywhere, but if they do increase the state aid, it would be roughly $1.5 million extra um, of state aid that we would get at least. Which I think is premature to hope for, because based on the history of them not, the legislature not, um, abiding by the court's ruling, the school funding. So I don't want to hang my hat on that, um.
We can sign and then let them vote on the upcoming, like, we doesn't.
Um. Okay. Motion on the table is to approve the contracts as written tonight. And then deal with other stuff later. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
No, not anymore. No, no.
Three, two. Um, I think that's it for our high school discussion. I hope so.
We have like all page stuff still.
Yes. Um, consent agenda, do we have an item?
Yes, you had a child re-leave.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Do we have to go into not public for that or no?
We do not.
Obviously.
Want to talk about the.
All set. Okay.
I don't think Trish is listening.
Motion, Trish.
Trish.
Did you get that motion?
There was a motion to move the staff leave question.
Zach and Nate. Child re-raise bust. Got it. No, sorry, I know it was. Um, okay, discussion. No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Better. Review of correspondence. I think there was only one email. Um. From Janet Goodrich on November 8th regarding high school, um, contracts. Despite the uncertainty. It will be in the minutes, but does anyone have anything to discuss regarding that particular email? We can stay answered.
It's a moot point.
Yeah, okay. Onto fun topics such as the budget.
Should have really done this before we talked about contract.
It's one thing that so many people want. Got a lot to talk about.
Are there any M B C people here?
No.
Sandra?
What?
Would it be it isn't worth saying that the elected wants to comment on the current discussion?
Oh, yeah, it's not a bad idea.
Wants to comment on. Please, we are discussion.
All right, all in favor of adding a public comment?
Right there.
Right now. Aye, aye, aye.
Anybody have anything to say?
Hi, Marie Bryson on Range Road. I thank you for your really hard work and, you know, I know it was a tough struggle to reconcile this vote tonight. I appreciate you looking out for our taxes and all of that. I do agree that that Tom voted for choice, so I think he made the right decision, even though it wasn't, that's not. I don't, I didn't vote for choice, because I do believe the taxes are going to go up. I think it's going to be a tough hit for everybody. But I also feel like people have had all these months to follow what's going on. So they know that there's, they should know that there's going to be a hit. So anyway, I just want to thank you. Um, also, the, this is such an important, like the school and your budget is so big. I'm kind of surprised that you, that like it's hard to hear everybody and it's hard to, you know, get the, you know, get it online. And I don't know, like, why couldn't you use it, use where, um, the, um, selectmen, you know, have a much higher tech thing so that we could hear everybody. It just doesn't, I mean, this is the biggest, this is our biggest spend, so I don't know why, you know, we can't, we should be able to hear it better. That's all. But I really appreciate everybody and all your hard work.
Thank you so much.
I was a humdinger of others. I guess my comments go like this. You are the administrators you propose. Be the legislative body, we decide, not you. That's the way it is. So voters will always have their say. A, no, whatever. But they're the final authority, so they will always have their say. On tough nights like this, I'm going to shift gears entirely and this is more for the benefit of the chair. Following the proper procedure, parliamentary procedure would be very, very helpful. A motion is made, a motion to amend is made. You now limit the discussion to the amendment, not to the whole issue. So I noticed in your conversations that the whole issue would be, if I discussed on the amendment. So the amendment is disposed of one way or the other. The main motion is now still open to further amendment. Your discussion on the amendment, the second amendment, is limited to what the amendment says. I want a one-year contract. I move one-year contract. All favorite discussion about one year. It fails. I vote for a two-year contract, discussion on two-year contract. Not on the whole issue, we're only discussing two-year contract. That's all we're talking about. We vote on that. Sooner or later, you get to the main motion, probably as amended. So the main, main motion now is a two-year contract as amended, blah, blah, on the previous vote, or whatever, whatever the sort of sense of that. By having the votes on the discussion as the amendments are applied, it, it narrows the discussion down to what is really. And I could say you guys were really struggling tonight, so I bless you all, seriously. But whatever help that is, I, I hope it helps in the future. The other thing too is, which wasn't mentioned tonight. I think a serious look at staff reduction is probably in order. That doesn't mean you have to do it and not do it or whatever, but there's a, a lot of situations in town right above this high school thing that people are very unhappy about. And I know from the legislative point of view, some serious amendments are coming down the road this year at the legislative level. So. So since that option was mentioned and is on the table, I think a serious hot-to-hot discussion about that might be in order if this all blows up. If nothing's passed or it doesn't work out, that might be in order. So I thank you all for your service. I think you had a doozy of a night tonight. That's healthy, it was a good discussion, and that's my two cents. So.
Thank you.
Hope you all have a good Christmas for sure.
Thank you.
I wanted to say thank you as well. Um, I don't want to tie up, I mean, I have an alarm that goes off at 9:30 to tell me to get ready for Ben 11:00. So if I, if I'm still here at 9:30, you're going to hear a ding that says, you're supposed to be walking down. Um, that's it. I wanted to, I appreciated the discussion. I did agree with him, guys kind of got lost in the weeds on the, like, we were discussing amendments that haven't even been seconded. I'm just, for future reference, just kind of. For your own sake.
Yeah.
For your own sake, not just a suggestion. Um, the other thing that I think you need to understand, and I know that you were trying to represent the people and you've heard the people at the meeting, and I was at that meeting where the people were discussing and where I think a lot of the misunderstanding is, is the perception that we had earlier tonight, that your tax, that the school taxes went up by more than 50% because people are upset because they don't understand what happened. I don't think there are, you know, you guys went up 7% and you put on a new roof and the roof's not existed. I, it just, it isn't realistic that they should be upset with how much the school taxes went up, in my opinion. They should not have been targeting the school. And I do know, and I blamed the selectmen for that in my discussion the other day, that they allowed the Facebook discussion to override. They, there was a void because there wasn't a proper conversation about what happened and as a result for Facebook, and there were literally a former selectman that kept pointing the the finger at the school, saying, it's a school, it's a school. And it wasn't the school that was responsible for the bulk of that increase, and I just was very, I personally was very upset about that. And I just wanted to say that I don't think you did, I think you did an amazing job on fiscal, being responsible this year. And we're not putting, hopefully, a new roof and a new systemic system, so I'm not sure this is going to be quite the big hit that we're all thinking it is on the bottom line, but I don't know, I haven't seen the numbers, obviously. But thank you again. I really, truly appreciate all of you, even those that I didn't agree with tonight. I appreciate the discussion.
I made, this was the minority tonight, so.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay, no other public comments or public comment session number three. Okay, back to the budget, onto the budget. So before um start going over the updated numbers, when we sat down at our admin meetings on Friday, we spent several hours with the budget. And I heard concerns from the administration about what it's like to live in a default budget year after year and to acknowledge that we are able to move money around, but constantly losing either, you know, funds for one line that you've put in for over and over and over. And you can't move money until you know you have excess money in other places. So oftentimes, we're, we're going a whole year and Mrs. Witty has put in for things year after year after year, and then they go back to a dollar, back to a dollar, back to a dollar. So the administration felt strongly enough about this that they prepared a list of potential cuts to bring our budget under defaults. Um, we needed, I think, $76,000, $77,000 to get below default, and we have a list of $80,000 in cuts. Um, we sat down and we, again, went line by line. I had a pencil, Mrs. Witty had the spreadsheet, and Brian had the calculator, and Mrs. McConnell cheered us on. And we identified some areas that we could hopefully find enough funds. Sir Grant, we freed up some funds, Mrs. Witty's been working on those activities. That has to be spent by September 30th, so you'll see a couple of notes where we plan to put some of those items into the S R three grant to use those up. Um, and then some don't have notes because we're just, we're just trying to make this work and just making jungle cuts. But they are all things that the administration felt like they could live within for this year and that it would accomplish, hopefully, getting a budget passed because it would be come in under default.
We have in the past had the budget that was under the default, still not passed, correct?
Yeah.
So I'm just, I mean, somebody says something about that, and I'm like, I remember when it was a budget was lower than the default budget and it still didn't pass.
Yep.
So people don't always even look at that.
Yeah, we're going to make a valiant effort if you're in agreement with us. So we didn't put any of these, we'll go through the budget and talk about the changes that were made since the last version. We didn't put any of this in the budget because we obviously needed to know if this was something you could support. If you do, we will put them into the budget. If you don't, then we will not touch.
So these are all things that you feel you can get by without? Oh, and the substitute salaries, is that because you're planning on having less?
We base it on the actuals.
Oh, okay, just, okay. And interns, we don't have any interns.
So what will happen is, you know, we put it as.
It's going to make it zero, so if we have them in the future.
Well, we put it as a dollar, but if we end up in a default, then it goes back up to $7,800. We, you know, we put 2,000 in to cover the few interns that we may have. But if we end up in a default, we'll end up with $7,800 in that line that won't get spent.
That we don't need. So there's like, that we need somewhere else. The default, regardless of whether it's higher or lower, doesn't reflect the needs of the school.
Correct.
And you can't always move that money around because it's for that ridiculous thing.
Right, the default needs contractual allows. You know, we've tried for years to get extra days into a, into the nurses and we, it, we've gone to default and it was years I've tried to do that, so.
The math, that's a pretty big cut, what's that?
Yeah, I'm putting that, I'm putting $10,000 or into, or it'll be $14,000 into the S R three.
So you're still getting the math subscriptions, just it's coming from somewhere else?
Right.
Trying to use up our S R three.
S R three is grant money?
Yeah, yeah, that's the rest of the grants.
So what's happened with the S R three is that there are some lines that, for example, I put in. Um, we, we were going to try to get a grant writer for this SAU, and, and we were going to divide the cost between all of the five districts, and the position just never got filled, so I have a certain amount of money sitting there.
Mrs. Witty filled the position.
Yeah, exactly.
The salary that we advertised.
No, no, no. So that, that money now, by September, we're not going to spend that by September 30th, so I can reallocate those funds to a different area, which will cover the $14,000 that we need. And that money would purchase just the Eureka squared that, that the, that the math team needs to purchase for next year. So all of the Eureka squared materials, which is the next iteration of Eureka, will go into the S R three. And we've had past experiences with getting things like that passed. Pembroke has, has gotten curriculum like that passed in there, or approved, I should say, in their, so. I have, I have it, it's all drafted, but it will take a few days to get it.
I was wondering, I mean, one of the comments tonight was about the subscriptions, the technology subscriptions. Is that something you looked really closely at?
We definitely.
Yeah, there's two handouts that we'll, we have for you.
And I know, I know that Danielle and I have talked about, like, some of the extra activities, you have lines in the budget, like, for cheerleading, but we haven't had cheerleading for a long time.
I know there are like $100, but it's still. I think we updated, I think, Sirree, you've updated that. To take out the ones that we don't run.
But the curriculum development, does that mean you're not canceling that coverage?
So that was covering the now, so what we decided was that we would, we would keep some money in that line to pay for expenses, mileage and tell, and use the contracted line for conferences that teachers get and use that money to pay for the actual conferences.
So it would still be on as before, but just funded differently?
Correct.
When I think about it, do you want to go through the rest of the budget and go back to it? Are you supportive of it? I mean, I am supportive of it. I am supportive, but I'm also cautious because we're currently negative $300,000. So I totally get the reasoning, and I think we should have a budget that reflects our needs. But I'm worried that the more that we take out, the less our needs will be met, regardless of its default or an operating budget.
Do you have the amended bottom line for the budget? As you said, it was.
No, we would just, once we go over Amber's changes and you decide that that looks good to you, then we would just subtract the 80 separate ones, but, yeah, yeah. I mean, what, Zach Math, Math Man? What would be like the rough percentage difference between this total versus the total with?
The 80,000, no?
80,000, what percentage is that?
It's nothing.
Right.
So 1% is 180, so we're talking about half of the.
Okay. And it's not about, it's, that's, and I know that's hard to look at, but it's not about the percentage. No, I know. Getting, getting budget lines that we actually need.
And this is, and this is also evidence, how hard it is to find a budget, right?
Correct.
So they, they took, they took, they went and stripped out everything they could.
We spent three hours.
We spent three hours, five, $80,000 bucks, and that's that, you know. There isn't, there isn't that in the school's budget. Your places are, you start cutting buses out, you start cutting staff, and yet.
I'm, I'm curious too about, you know, the comments made about staff production, has that been like that?
Yep. We've, we, we've kind of talked about worst-case scenarios and, oh my gosh, what, if we did lose staff members, what would we do? And there's not, you're changing the education at Deerfield Community School. If, you know, if you said, and someone talked about redundancy, and I'm trying to think, what would that be? Do you mean like two gym teachers? Do you mean, you know, when you, you have a K eight school, so you're trying, you would be, your schedule, it would be incredibly difficult to get kids the specials that they need. If you tried to put that, if Brian was here, he'd probably have a heart attack trying to think about how to cover eight grade levels with one gym teacher to try to get kids the activity that they need. You know, then I, then redundancy, or you're talking about the fact that there are two reading specialists. One is for metal, for the primary school grade levels where they're trying to learn to read, and we're trying to prevent them from needing service, special ed services. And the other is to kids that somehow got to middle school and still have significant gap and need services to get them up to a, you know.
Every night, I'm, 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 I'm.
And, you know, so the place, I guess you look at then is to look at the enrollment, which I don't know what packet that was in, but we do the, for the budget builders, we do the class enrollments, and you can look at, you know, where you, how many students you have in each class, and you say, okay, if we want to save 100,000 or whatever the teacher is with benefits, are we okay with, you know, putting four more students per class in, you know? Is that going to get the return for your?
Less than 1%.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's multiple staff, right? One staff member is not really doing it.
Or, she didn't, that comes off kind of right, it's, um, so, you know, three classes, two different, three different.
And, and which would then also potentially impact our?
Impacts everything.
Everything and our test scores and all these things that we as a board want to improve.
Deerfield has traditionally very much supported arts and activity and, you know.
Well, and there's not our teacher and kind of me, you don't, you've just, you're losing band, you're losing chorus, you're just meeting the minimum standards of, okay, every kid has to get this much per week, like, okay, we'll divide that out and make sure everybody gets their little bit, but it erodes your programs. And there's not, I mean, besides like sports, there's not a huge amount of things. Not that kids don't enjoy school, but there's not a huge amount of things that they can engage in that's not just like math, reading or science. It's like that sort of.
And you could even cut all the co-curriculars.
Yeah, right, the co-curriculars are, I know this because of my present, another presentation I'm working on about the budget. Co-curriculars make up very small.
Very, I think I had to take it out of my binder because it wasn't even showing up in this life.
Yeah. And then, you know, you, we did, we have a lot of conversation in Haverick about, a few years ago about this. And we actually had someone that was doing a drug and alcohol task force from the National Guard come and speak to the board about the return on investment for having things for kids to do.
Right.
And what their alternative activities are when you don't have things for them to do.
Yeah.
I mean, like you said, they get excited about the music and how many kids are getting music lessons in this community? And we have this awesome music program and so that's what they're interested in, that's what they're doing with time.
Without that.
Take that away, I don't know what they're doing.
It's mischief.
But it's not good.
Mischief and also less excitement about school and learning.
Yes, I think, yes.
There's lots of research that shows that kids are engaged, they do better.
Right, yes.
So.
From my perspective, if, if the discussion is, do you cut staff?
I just want to throw down.
Yeah, it's been twice tonight and I want to. Right, and I talk about, and I don't want, again, the appearance to be that we have not considered anything. That like we are unwilling to look at the hard, and have the hard discussions.
But if we are looking at or considering thinking outside the box, that sort of stuff. A couple of years ago, we had a model, we were working with a model of kind of like banning kids in different grades. And the idea would be instead of having three teachers per sixth, seventh, eighth grade.
Yep.
We have nine middle school teachers. Why is it leveled when each class size is whatever it is if you made it eight and banned the kids rather than leveling the whatever? You know, that way I, we'd be pulled away from that, but that was something.
Yeah, I gotta say, I love that.
All the age.
I loved it, loved it.
You did, did you five six?
I did seven and eight.
Yeah.
Together in the same class.
Yeah, I loved it.
That was, I think it was.
It had so many advantages and no negatives, did it for several years.
Anita did it too, was five, six, right?
I mean, I would certainly be happy to have that discussion. I don't have enough information personally, I'm not a teacher, I don't even have a child at this school right now. So I can't, I don't feel like I can vote on that as it relates to the budget exclusively. Like I, I'm in, I'm into exploring it and hearing about how it's beneficial for students. But I don't, I'm not comfortable having that discussion only in terms of our budget.
I think it would be short sighted to, when you're literally turning this budget over to the NBC next week to say, oh, we're gonna slash five hundred thousand because we're gonna cut a few teachers when you haven't had an informed.
Yeah, and like.
Conversation.
Entirely change the curriculum and dynamics of the school merely because we have to hand this over to the NBC.
And that's a response to the increase.
That we just created.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's.
And is that even our place? I mean, it's not our place.
I, yeah, I don't feel like it's my place.
I mean, that's not really, that's not, that's not our job as a school board.
It's, and it's conversation that if you wanted to have about the curriculum.
It is, because I thought it was supposed to be in budget.
Well, but you.
Curriculum and the programming.
The fact that it, we used to be a four day school week here, that at some level was a school board decision. This independent doesn't get to make that decision.
If you go back to, that would save a lot of money. Wouldn't it save now?
Save money how? People are still salaried, are we gonna cut everyone's salary from what they're used to the bill?
Well, I don't think we're gonna go there, so it's probably one of the.
No, usually starters.
We don't usually talk about building ourselves.
So, we need to move.
You need to talk.
Yeah, so we did.
We need to move a budget, so it's current, we move a budget number, put it on discussion.
Do you want to go through what the changes were specifically from the last time? Cause Amber has her summary for you.
Yeah.
Um, so the revised budget packet, um.
Read John Wiltford.
Number one was update, updated high school tuition expenses, special costs and food service. So the change that occurred on page two with eleven, was account number eleven hundred five sixty one. High school tuition was updated to include the Cobran tuition rate. The Concord tuition rate will be fifteen five five seven fifty nine, the Cobran tuition rate is nineteen seven one seven. The breakdown of high school tuition can be found following the food service budget in the budget packet. The tuition proposed at the last budget meeting using estimated tuition rates was three million, three twenty four eight oh one. The new actual rates is three million, five twenty nine four oh six. She, um, has accounting the kids that are already there, thirty five students at Cobran at nineteen seven seventeen and then a hundred and fifty three Concord students at the new rate. And that increased from the last budget a couple of weeks ago, that increased two hundred four thousand.
So I, I just want to say probably that is a seven hundred and ten thousand dollar increase in the high school tuition funds. Plus what could have been a hundred thousand dollar savings last year. So we're up eight hundred K. That's a dollar a thousand before we get into anything else.
Um, on page five, um, can I just ask a question about why, oh, thirty five is the students who are currently there? Are those students there? Are those the students that we are already paying for or all the Deerfield students? Cause there are some private pay.
Just the students.
Okay.
We're the.
Yeah, never mind, it's gonna, yeah. So, special education section, and this is where I was talking about being extremely nervous about your budget already being in deficit because just since the last meeting, we increased special education three hundred seventy seven thousand nine hundred twenty one dollars. And when you're looking at runaway costs, that is absolutely one in every single district in the S A U. Same thing is happening. Then this is not, this is not usually happening, but special ed transportation actually decreased sixty nine thousand seven fifty, um, since the last time. And then, um, the food service expenditures, um, increased by twelve thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars due to roster, um, changes. And that's covered by the food service programs on the simple fund balance. So, um, the difference between the voted and the defaults or is one point nine million. The proposed FY twenty five and default, which we just talked about is currently seventy six thousand seven nineteen. Uh, special ed increases for specifically FY twenty four twenty five, just special education is one million seventy seven thousand dollars. And the operational increases that do not include special ed are nine hundred, with seven hundred of that being high school tuition.
All right, well, we need to do something.
That's the number.
So let's start by, I'll move you both by a bit to, eighteen million, seven hundred seventy seven thousand one hundred and six dollars.
Eighteen, seven, 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 one oh six.
Yes, that does not include the, that doesn't include the, we amended that in. We should work on some of that, we just want to keep that in.
Okay.
So this one, eight thousand dollars.
Discussion, so Zach has moved the proposed budget as listed in, as presented.
I'm going to amend that number down by eighty thousand, seven hundred forty five dollars, um, in line with the administration's.
So we're taking the eighteen million, seven, seven, seven and taking off the eighty thousand?
If, if it passes.
Yep, okay.
Any discussion about the amendment?
Exclusively. I don't know what I'm doing.
That was good, you were very strong, amendment. Any discussion about the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment, uh, which takes out the eighty thousand, seven fifty four from?
Forty five.
Forty five, um, from the proposed budget.
All right.
Aye.
I'm gonna vote no, but doesn't matter. It four one.
Four one.
Okay. So that's what we're working with now.
So that gives a new bottom line of eighteen million, six hundred ninety six thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. So that would be the amended motion.
Okay. So we're like, that's roughly four thousand under the default.
Yes, the default would be.
Eighteen, seventeen, nine, seven, eighty seven.
Which theoretically could change anyway, after we go to the NBC, they could add back in four, four thousand dollars.
To default.
To our budget.
To our default, to our budget.
Right, yes.
To have it under the default.
Then it could be taken out again.
It could be, correct.
There are plenty of opportunities to change this, yeah, okay.
Any other discussion about the eighteen million, six ninety six, three sixty one? And feel free, if you have questions of specific lines or whatever, you can. Certainly reveal.
I mean, I don't even know if this is a discussion for now about the special placement increases. And you said that's across the board and everyone's staying in. Do we know if there is anything that is trying to hold that something, if there's any? It, you know, you just hope that you get the special ed aid to offset, but it unfortunately comes the following year. And the state sometimes, oftentimes does not fully fund your offset. But unfortunately, you have to raise and appropriate the money that we're spending now and then comes in as revenue next year, which is in, in your, the revenue sheet and it does, um, you know, offset where the tax increase would be if you didn't get that aid. But it does have to go into the budget. And these are, you know, these are not because we want our students to be in special placement.
Oh, no, right.
You know, these are.
It's a last, that's the last.
Affection, you know, and we have, we have had many students come into Deerfield that we've never even seen. You know, it's, it's, there's so much going on right now with kiddos out there, it's across the state.
And I will say, I've said it before and I'll say it again, but we are obviously legally obligated to cover all special ed costs. Unfortunately, those who mandate we cover it don't often pay us for it. So then it unfortunately falls to the taxpayer when these, the unfunded mandates, as they say, tie our hands in terms of paying for special education and, and anything, any, any sort of legal thing like paying for buses for K through six, that's also doesn't come from anywhere in the state or whatever, who mandates that we do it, but, um, there are legal things that we can't, um, not pay for.
Um, the, the current three hundred fifty thousand dollar deficit that we're running, um, that is gonna be paid if it holds up. So that's gonna be paying for, I think it's our special ed.
It was up today, so your deficit is, uh, three, almost three hundred thirteen thousand, your special ed trust right now has three, and twenty thousand. So you might leave a tiny bit in there.
We have.
And you have retainage.
Yeah.
So.
And we have.
We are like tweaking by the hair of our.
But I, I would be extremely nervous if you had to drain your special ed fund and then going into next year.
Right.
No lifeline.
Yes, yeah, well, yes, with, within reason, I mean, when things come up that need to be bought or taken care of. I would assume, I mean, we can have that conversation, but I'm assuming you don't want to shut everything down, um, you know, I.
We need to people.
And I, well, I had made the decision and I, you can sort of veto that, that field trips could continue. But, you know, some of the students, things that students do, we've, we've frozen anything unnecessary, but I don't want to take away.
I don't want to punish the students.
Right, I just want to take away sports, I don't want to take away our supplies, you know, that kind of stuff. We're doing bare minimum, Mrs. Widdie and I email several times a day, like, okay, we have this, what do you think? Um, well, can it wait? Well, not really, you know, we're having every single thing that we spend.
We have.
Interesting.
And I was gonna say, and Trish is, yeah.
If, if we, if we roll this to the tax conversation, which maybe doesn't matter because personally asks us to have a tax conversation.
I just think it's important because it's recorded.
Yeah, that's true.
So, so if we, if we maybe just roll that into this, this, this favor.
Can we vote on this budget? Or is this still discussion?
Well, this kind of applies to the budget as. So.
See, I can't follow a procedure, was that cute?
Try working. It's fine. So we're looking at a one point nine, uh, one, one million nine hundred fifty thousand basis increase. Broken up primarily between special ed and this.
Yep.
So we know there's no surplus going to actually be used to offset that, so we also know that, uh, in their last meeting, you said that they will likely exhaust the funds that they have budgeted this year. We know we're gonna exhaust the funds we have budgeted this year. So what does that mean? That means that has additional funds that need to be generated from the taxpayers. But does that work out too? You own a five, if your house is assessed for five hundred K, you're looking at about a twelve hundred fifty dollar additional increase on top of the increases you have.
That'll come next year.
That'll come next December. That'll come next year and when you get it next December, because of the way the tax rate is set, you're likely to see the entire increase once. You'll see that additional hit with no relief in sight for three years from this. That's, that's my reality, that's, that's what I'm trying to stress to everybody. I almost wish this conversation could have occurred at the same time.
But the tax thing that he asked for, I mean, what Don was saying is that, what did he say to school? That or something?
Yeah, and I mean, I, I have the numbers right here and that's not true.
No, the, so the school wasn't a, if we.
Okay, we're not talking about the tax rate, yeah, we're dealing with the motions.
But I'm glad we talked about that.
Yes, we, we will talk about the tax rate.
But this is twelve hundred fifty dollars on that. Additional.
Um, all right, any other discussion about the amended motion? No, not amended motion. Regulation, wait, the amended pass, okay, the amended pass, amended motion.
Are you with this?
No.
You just keep up.
It is getting late.
Uh, okay.
When is all to go center?
I was gonna say the nine thirty. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll still defend it with.
I was gonna say, how does that work at the NBC?
On support acts, it's my, it's my.
Okay.
But what if they have something?
Fine. We will have a great time with this budget on Tuesday, um.
Party starts Tuesday with the NBC.
Correct.
Should all be there.
Um, I don't forget to mention in the, in the budget section of your drive, we did submit some things from Ann about technology subscriptions, um, and why they have become alternate, modern alternatives. And then also a spreadsheet that broke down each of these subscriptions, subscriptions that we have. So add a feature for me, if this is a subject that I think others, let me know and, and still keep that with you.
I think that would be very helpful.
I mean, again, it's a little late when you're finalizing a budget to try to.
Right, like, really through and say, well, we can cut ten thousand of this, right, you know, it's, but it's certainly a conversation we can have. Okay. Is that it for the budget?
Yes.
All right, the next very fun topic. Indeed, draft warrant articles. And this is a doozy of a night.
Liberty table.
I agree with you.
I was thinking, talk about them.
We didn't notice. Okay. What?
So we, we will put in your budget number that you just voted on and we will put in, once the contract is ratified, we will put the para contract numbers in. So you're really starting at this point at number four, which is your new. So keep in mind, if any of these you fund from surplus, you should not put any weight into thinking you're gonna get them funded.
Correct.
You may, but you may not. So if there's something you're extremely passionate about, you may have to raise it from taxation if you want a guarantee. Not a guarantee, it doesn't pass, it's, you're killed.
I, I think for the sake of expediency, any of your articles who's had a vote, need to be raised from the organization this year.
Yes, and I will, uh, I will see your hand and I will raise it. I think it would be tone deaf to ask for much.
Yeah.
In terms of any of these articles that we may have thought about earlier.
I'm worried about your special ed trust fund, that is the one.
Yeah.
Not, it's not my, this is your discussion, but that's just, I would just put out there that that's what the one I'd be a little bit nervous about.
So if you advance the special ed, that's a hundred K. We probably need to have a, are you kidding me there based on recent experience? So that would be, I would support blasting. Two hundred fifty K in addition. To taxation. To taxation, I think that, to taxation.
I mean, you could split it too, you could say, hey, we want.
There's not gonna be anything there to split.
Yeah, but if there is, wouldn't we want that money to go to special ed versus the fund balance at the end of the year?
Yes.
Right, like, I would say, I would rather see it go to special ed than, like, even if it's eighty grands left at the end of the year, like, wouldn't it be beneficial?
Split it and just say, well, like.
Well, you could say, we want to put a hundred fifty, but taxation and a hundred by surplus. Do whatever.
You had a warrant article years ago, it was nine dollar.
Yeah.
Written subsidy, it was, uh, with the balance to be taken from the fund balance and the remainder to the rest of the taxation. You put it that way.
Yeah. But I don't think we have that much in the fund balance.
No, so it was, if you had forty thousand dollars left, took the forty K and a hundred grand.
Put the rest.
Yeah.
But that would, that would really be prudent to do if it was gonna be like the state, the only article. Right, and then basically saying, listen, you got whacked, we need to, we need to bolster our fences. Let us take what we have and, and add the rest.
So do we have any money left in the renovation side of this fund and building?
We funded that with a hundred thousand dollars and I don't think we've done anything with that, those funds.
We're due for a public hearing.
Yeah, we have one, yeah, coming up in weeks. It's got, yeah, the ad is going in the paper, um, and I have a whole breakdown somewhere in my pile of things to show them.
Is it worth? I'm afraid that that, we just talked about with the, the warrant article, may get voted down and we get nothing. What if, what if it was one article about surplus as much as we have and then a second article about our taxation of a hundred fifty thousand?
That's a good idea, maybe splitting it, because it's voted down because of the, yeah.
Is it? To hold the warrant articles till the next meeting when we can make the decision? Or we can move on paper the funds that we need, update balances and our trust funds?
I don't think so. Only because we need to have them drafted, I mean, we could still, I don't think we need to vote. But I think we need to sort of have a good idea of what we're gonna do because next meeting, December twentieth, is like three weeks before the warrant articles are due. So I don't know that it would be prudent to just say, ah, we'll think about it next time. I think we should, I mean, I don't think we need to vote and finalize them tonight.
So then, what do you want to see for special ed? Or do you want to do a separate special ed?
I like, I like that idea.
Do you want to do a hundred fifty and a hundred and fifty? You may not get the first hundred fifty, but you might get the second.
Right, or you just do whatever the fund, whatever it is goes into special ed into the other ones just to increase.
That's, we have to have a number.
But it might not get funded, so if you say we want a hundred and fifty from.
We might have forty.
Reserves, there might be forty thousand that gets, that gets funded.
So, so I would, so then it would be two articles, four hundred fifty from unbalanced, one hundred fifty taxation.
Is that an, is that enough though, because they only get forty.
One ninety seven.
I don't think we'll get.
I actually, I, I think you're gonna find it a hard time passing.
Yeah, we're getting to have things, yeah.
And we also are asking for the paras to be approved.
Tough year for them to hit the.
Tough year.
It is a tough year.
Um, okay. Are there, okay, so I think.
Okay, so I think we take out building renovation site improvement.
What's a, a projected balance?
We, we, that's the one you just started.
Well, I'm sorry. A hundred in it?
Obviously.
Yep. So nothing on that one.
And the repair trust fund is nothing in there?
Repair trust fund.
Yeah, three sixty seven, three oh three.
Yeah, I'd say.
Four after.
Gosh, yeah. I think she already, I think she already put it in there, didn't she? I'm pretty sure. Pretty sure it was.
So that means it gives us a little bit of money, but you need to do something.
That's, that, that will get you next, probably get the next project up and running, but you're. More than that to do the big project time, but all next step.
Right. What? I know that we can start to others, but what are the big projects on the horizon?
What would you like them to be?
I don't know. Yes, that we, we. We took out the eight hundred and fifty more thousand, I'm going to go forth.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
They need, they didn't throw it yet.
So what are, what are, if, if we go through the, the previously kind of figured list. The next big things, solar is something, doesn't.
No cost.
Doesn't matter, depends on how we, all right, so that, that's another point. From there, uh, you'd be looking at the mechanical, the HVAC side of the equation, and then.
Which three hundred and sixty seven is not going to, not going to do.
No, but that project's going to take a couple of years to get designed and created. Probably have next year to finish the design side of it. Because really solar is a project for next summer.
Right.
So you could have more than enough to get the ball rolling. But you may want to consider. Doing a, a larger project in phase two, which is place the, this one isn't. Do you have them? The wall mounts? Just the other one, the dozen, right?
You mean the window mount?
The register?
Oh, no, the, the, the heating system, so it's, it's just covered different. So if you go to start replacing those, you're not necessarily going to find something, same form factor. So as you're making those upgrades, you're going to. Just require a paintwork. And at the same time, if you've been planning appropriately, because they all happen to live underneath the windows, which are also a replacement, is it may be a. One side of the building, upgrade the mechanical windows on each side one year. Do the other side the following year, or, or some phase plan. Because if you're going to tear up the drywall and repaint, fix everything, and then do it again two or three years later when you replace those, but that's. Late. Basically. The glazing is. It, it's been, it's been outlined for replacement by the engineering firms. Glaze is one of those things where it's, it's tough, because. It's, it's there, it's working, it's eating the outside out and inside in. Um, but as it ages, it becomes less efficient, there's new technologies there, it's, are going to be tighter. You know? Uh, seals are. Or that stuff, they've lost their efficiency. Is the outside still outside, outside still outside? Yes. So they haven't failed to that extent. But they're certainly, there isn't the. Any in all ways that they would have expected. Those are the two biggest projects you have.
Okay.
Those are both going to be sizable.
And of course, the other element in the room is space.
I think.
The modulars and space.
I think that ship is still.
Oh, I think so too.
It's not wiring was the next big one too.
You didn't mention wiring.
Power.
Wire, so wiring is. So upgrading the electrical becomes a much bigger project, it's probably not feasible. To couple it in. With. Um, some sort of heavier renovation. So I, I don't know that that is an easier job to get done.
Uh, uh, as a standalone project.
As a standalone project. You know, so.
So are we funding that?
I would say.
I think you throw the break.
Yeah, I would say it doesn't sound like to me there is. A project that we are.
Solar.
Urgent.
Solar is the next big project.
Right.
We have twenty, we were, we were holding a larger amount in that for. Who failed and it needed immediate replacement. You could have done it in that concern.
Right. I think we have done a lot of the work. Did felt, feel urgent.
We've done more work in the last three years of this facility than they've seen. Yes, fifteen.
Right. Okay, um, do we want to do anything with the paving? No, it's empty, leave it empty. We're going to empty it, leave it that way.
I would say, I understand that we will eventually need to maintain the paving.
Okay, a year.
I don't think this is the year to now.
But you will want to, in upcoming years.
Yes.
Start putting money in for overlay of, not, obviously not the new parking lot, but.
Yeah.
Backlot.
Right.
On, on all that stuff. Probably got. Uh, it'll probably ten years. Really have to start. They'll, they'll do batch and stuff. Over. Somewhere around.
Okay. This last one that's in here, if we do anything, take it off. We just threw language in from another district to try to get something in there for you.
I was thinking about this, like, can the board actually sign a power purchase agreement? That's a long-term contract. Without approval.
It is.
I don't think that's what the law is. Like, I don't know if we can. I don't know what the rules are.
Well, the question for you becomes. Can we buy oil from the least expensive?
For one year, yes. But this is, like, if we do a power purchase agreement, that's a multi-year contract, right? Like, I don't know if we can, if we can do that.
I believe it's been done on multiple occasions.
You do it for, like, transportation, you do five-year contracts for.
And those don't go to the.
Listen, boy.
Oh, you guys just spent three million dollars earlier, it's like, what the hell's the difference?
That money just keeps going up every time you say it. Twenty-five million dollars. It becomes one month.
I caught a fish once, a Pleasant Lake, it was big.
I guess I'm just confused. I, if this warrant article existed in another district, it leads me to believe that it has to be on the warrant.
And you would still have to send it through legal. So.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, I just, I don't know that we could sign like a twenty-year power purchase agreement.
I would leave it for D three.
Yeah, so you want to do, you want to know, I need to know what you want.
I want.
If you can enter into a power purchase agreement.
Yes, without a warrant article. Or do we have to have a warrant?
Yeah, actually, that's a better question, is can, can the school board enter in with our agreement?
Yeah. And then do we put? No amount to be raised from taxation?
Then if it doesn't need to be a warrant article, it doesn't necessarily.
Right. Yeah, we don't. I guess that's my question, why another district would do that if. Yeah, I, that's, that's what leads me to believe you need to.
I would have it existed from another district, so. But.
Ten good to check.
Yeah. That we would need to for a twenty-year contract, even if there's not upfront costs.
Yes.
Possibility of a cost at some point over the twenty years?
Well, you, you can, my understanding is you can at some point. Buy the equipment. So that would be, I think, I, yeah, it says not, a term not to exceed twenty years with. Provisions for a buyout of the agreement.
Yeah.
Subject to subsequent appropriations.
I know we looked into it during the. Planning for the condition.
I think we're going to get everything approved.
Well, it was, it still was a power purchase agreement, but it wasn't broken into that. I guess it was outlined in some.
Right. Like, I think we, my first gut that we would have to get was approved.
To do just.
Yeah. But, okay, so then our only warrant articles really are budget, paras, special ed. Uh, Board of Education.
What's this one about, um?
Do we want to have the articles submitted to the Board of Education?
We do.
Yes, yes, we do.
I'm interested in an article. That's offering.
Um. I'm, 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 I'm going to ask her to knit a noose.
On my house tonight, there'll be something burning.
I, I was thinking, Dr. Tate. What's number three, show the difference to a district by articles who's defeated? Oh, I see.
That's for the paras.
So, yeah, the para contract fails.
Yeah.
We call a special meeting and sort of re-present an option of, just so that we can.
Have another.
Pay the par. Yeah. And I think, and then special education, and then potentially solar, I think that will be it.
Yes.
Ready for you?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I still got you, Ben.
Amazing.
I lost my agenda.
Ward reports.
Ward reports, okay.
Well, there was an H.
Oh, that's right, and, oh, yeah, there are these.
Facilities.
Um, Chris needs some direction on a couple of different things. One of them is deficiencies in the sprinklers that were identified. From the inspection that were, I think everything totaled together like twelve thousand dollars. Um, one was nine thousand two eighty-five, one was three thousand something, and one was sprinkler deficiencies and one was.
Can we pull that out of the trust fund?
Yeah, I was gonna say, and how are we paying for it? Well, that's what I was going to ask you, if you wanted us to just do that.
Two hundred questions.
Yeah, okay. Um, so the other thing that he needs direction on is, um. Our, R B Lewis is asking if we want a quote and what we intend to do about the extra detection and, and extra. Devices and the list of things from Deerfield Fire.
Can you give her back from the chief?
No, so I emailed the chief in September and he replied that he would get back to me after the fair, and I didn't hear, so I emailed him again in November. And I still haven't heard, so I don't know what you want, how you want to proceed. And how to handle his requests and that R B Lewis hasn't torn out the other stuff yet because he. He wanted to.
The chief needs to respond.
Is it time to go to the fire marshal?
Yeah. Frankly.
So the issue is that we need someone to sign off on something?
I can elaborate.
Yeah, no, yeah, I was going to say, go ahead, you, you know, you understand it better than I.
All right, so we. The last couple of years have designed, or had designed by a fire protection engineering firm, a replacement of our fire alarm system. Fire Protection Engineering Company came through the building, did their design, sent it to the state fire marshal as well as the fire chief. Both of them reviewed and approved the plans. Fire Protection Engineering Company then gave us the documents necessary for us to put the project out to bed. ASBIL designs were done by our contractor who was awarded the project, R B Lewis. Those drawings went to the state fire marshal and the fire chief for approval. That contract was, um, awarded, executed, and installed as designed. Following all of the fire protection. Engineering standards that the fire protection engineers had. It was, the plans were seen twice by the state fire marshal's office, received twice by the Deerfield. Approved, and seen twice by the fire chief. System we have is, uh, in, in, in basic concept, the same as what has been. New schools.
Allentown and Oyster River.
Oyster River being another, and I believe he said a good one in Bedford, it was the same design, basically. It meets every single standard, um, that is outlined in the code. On the, one of the last days of the project, fire chief came and was walking around the building and started. Asking for new additional devices to be added to the system. Those devices weren't in the original plans. They are not, that we're aware of, outlined in Deerfield's building codes anywhere. Um, but the chief did not want certain devices removed. As a temporary measure, fire alarm company left both systems running in parallel, our new system and our old system. While we wait for the chief to respond with what?
Local codes.
Local codes he's applying to these prints that we were not notified of during the design phase. The engineering phase and the ASBIL design phase of this project. Those changes require. Significant modification to the system that was installed, because that system was not installed to carry those additional devices. By code, we are required to remove the old devices. Um, once the new system went online, contractor wants to finish to up their job. They want to remove the old devices. Um, so we are running a kind of a hybrid parallel system. As Patty mentioned, she's asked the chief for clarification on what codes are being, what local codes are being applied. To the project that we were unaware of. Not notified of during the design and engineering phase. And, um, we haven't heard back from the fire chief. So this is going on three months. Four months. So at this point, I would move that we ask Patty about, uh, contact the state fire marshal's office and have them silence the system. Thank you.
Discussion. Is that like an appropriate step? Like, is that a thing?
We have to close out.
Right. It has to be signed off on, but it can be by the state fire marshal?
We can request that they sign it.
It will, I am sure, not be well received. Uh, by the environment in town, but at this point, we have installed and designed the system. Office. And the town fired, fired.
The state.
Chief had opportunities to weigh in on the plans during vote.
Should I notify Chief Fisher that we're going to be?
He doesn't respond, so it's, it's, that gets.
So the state fire marshals. Approved the plans, so we could assume that he. He or she, I don't know. Would, they would approve the final design and install, I assume.
You would assume that.
That's true, right, true.
And, and the things, there, there were, the, the requests the chief has made are requests that are outside.
Code.
Published code. Which is why we have asked him to identify in town ordinance or in town code what is being applied, because. From the engineering standpoint, we should not be. It's not, if it's not in town code, somebody could say, I want a pole station thirty-five feet up in the air on top of a light shed. Okay, well, why? And it, it needs to be in code, and so because it's not in code, it's very difficult for us to design the system. Especially after the review phase and the extension.
And, and we had a meeting with, like Zach said, the engineer and the installer and Chris and myself, Zach. Um, and, you know, I felt much better after that meeting when they told us that it was state-of-the-art design. But this is like cutting edge, it is, Allentown has it, Oyster River, new, brand new, extremely expensive school has it, other schools in New Hampshire have it.
It was a, and it certainly was a big ticket item.
Right, yeah.
That was part of a larger project, it's been ongoing for a number of years, you started the replacement panel and then worked out all the devices. And those projects require rewiring the entire building, but all of the devices had to be rewired, it's all new. Jacketed wiring. It's in special cable. So to go in and add on a bunch of additional bits into the system as we come to time, and we spent weeks getting the wiring later. During all those vacation week talks, I think that's more important, but all the school occasions, plus we get on after.
Summer.
And summer, pre-wiring, so that we can do a switch over it.
Okay, um, the other.
That, that conversation with the chief was the day before school started.
The other, um, I found the other item, I knew I had it written down, so I really do want your input, because the, the spink, the deficiencies that we need to fix are nine thousand two eighty-five. But the other piece of that was three thousand five hundred and eighty, and that's to increase the volume of the speakers and the strobes. Because the, um, Deerfield Fire Department, it wasn't part of our original request, but when they were here, they indicated that the volume wasn't loud enough. So I just wanted to be clear that that was the other piece of that, if you're okay with it.
And it's not three thousand.
The jobs for the.
Yeah. You know? That's the quote. Turn it up, turn the butt, it's same thing as cable, right? Add a channel and, you know, if to do is flip the switch, but it's.
In our original.
Cost you.
Our original, like, contract didn't. Say that we have it.
It's at the standard level.
Okay, yeah, and he wants a higher. So it's currently at the standard level, that's like.
That's why.
I see him in the code somewhere. So he's requesting something additional that will cost us three thousand dollars.
Design a V code, our amplifier needs goes, so I would say, um, to that extent. I'd like the fire marshal to come and stand off.
Yeah.
All right, so don't, so just.
All right, so don't, so just have Chris fix the sprinkler system.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Until we hear back.
I would, I would ask the. To request that. I just got over the five months, you'll see the engineer, as well. Hey, we have to pay the engineer. But so the engineer and installer appear. And that walk through to answer any potential questions. So if that's a slight. It's a lot less than what it's going to cost us to do all this. We need to get it off line.
Sounds good. Do you need any motions or anything?
No.
All right.
Oh, well, there was a, there was Zach and me to, for me to contact the fire marshal's office.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree. All right, all in favor of Patty contacting the state fire marshal's office?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh.
Okay, tax rate discussion. I think we should keep this as brief as possible. Um, seeing that it's nine eleven.
Yeah, you have nineteen minutes.
We have nineteen minutes to discuss.
You have other business.
And we might.
This is why you have to have two meetings a month.
Yeah. Um, okay. Who wants to kick off the tax rate discussion? So there was a meeting on Monday with the Board of Selectmen about the tax rate. And there was a lot of public comments, there was a lot of comments from board, so if people have not already watched that, I would tune in. Um, because this is certainly not going to be an exhaustive overview of the tax rate setting process, because we are not involved in the process. Um, so I don't want to speak for the Board of Selectmen or the DRA, who actually is the one who sets the tax rate, but.
So the thirty thousand foot giveaways, every March the town comes together and they appropriate funds for the town and schools. The responsibility of collecting those funds from the taxpayers falls upon the Board of Selectmen. The ones that set the tax rate, they go, even though we are independently lenity, they collect our taxes from the people for us and they. Put a bow on them and send them over throughout the course of the year. The, in Deerfield, historically, the school has operated with a funded balance at the end of the year, which has been used, which gets sent back to the Board of Selectmen and, and effectively works as a credit towards the following year's tax. And that, that helps offset and reduce the tax rate when those funded balances are available. The last couple of years, we've had years with very large fund balances because we weren't operating buses and the school was known full-time. We had additional funding resources that were unanticipated, which created a very large surplus, which allowed the Board of Selectmen to build a fairly large. Cable, required to hold a certain amount of money for cash flow reasons per DRA. But they had a considerable amount more than that, which they used to then. Lower the tax rate for a couple of years to the benefit of the people by consuming these excess funds they had. Those funds have dried up, um, which has an impact on the tax rate because they have to collect all of it and they don't have anything to offset. We've also been tasked by the community to start making improvements on this building, which the community has supported at the ballot by allowing us to utilize additional funds, whether being raised, which. Or by allowing us to take our fund balance and set aside into our reserve funds, which we are then able to use for projects like the apartment lot you see outside, the roof over our heads, the septic system.
Fire.
The fire alarm panel, all these things. That does have an impact on the tax rate because if we are, if those funds get, um, pushed with authorization from the voters. Into our trust funds to then be used for projects that we've outlined and notified the voters intend on doing. It's still money that has to come from somewhere, so.
Or money that's not going back to.
Or money that's not going back to help offset the, the, the upcoming year's tax rates. Um, so, certainly, this has been. I would say there's almost been a little bit of a perfect storm of occurrences that have, have created this on the town side. Um, one of them being the community really rallying in support to make improvements to the facility, which we have absolutely done, um, and they've done that with tax dollars. Um, a, the town having to work with a budget, default budget, that hasn't necessarily met the needs of the towns, the town side from a spending priority standpoint.
Over a few years ago.
Over a few years ago, which.
We couldn't spend because we couldn't hire the buses to run.
Right, and, and COVID flushing money into communities, which created fund balances because you couldn't spend the money that you necessarily were already appropriated. So that perfect storm came together, um, a lot of us saw it, a lot of people didn't, um, and that caused a substantial spike in the tax rate, four dollars, I think it was four dollars and twenty-four cents.
Four dollars and fifty-four.
Fifty-four cents, I'm sorry.
But that's the, that's not the increase, but that's what it is, the tax rate.
Yeah, so, that caused a substantial impact, which is then collected all at once on your second pass. Board of Selectmen has been very clear, they were clear on Monday night, there is no relief in sight on their end. And we clearly are not going to be able to provide any relief as well. So, that tax rate that you saw is likely to continue unless there is a sudden influx of cash that they can use to help offset the tax rate. And based on. The budgets in front of us on both the, the school and the town side, there's additional increases coming next year. Um, that. Without making drastic changes on either side of, of the budget, are going to have tax impacts that will be felt again this time of year. That's it in the next.
And I think, um, a comment was made that the tax rate from last year to this year for the school doubled, and I'm not sure.
Our budget did not double, so we did not.
It went from fourteen fifty to fifteen sixty-three.
Yeah, it's maybe a misperception that there's that first bill which comes, which is half-bill.
Looking at the July bill.
July matches the December.
I went through all the December bills. And interestingly, I don't know if you guys know, I have some land in Epsom, so I pay Epsom taxes. The Epsom school tax is higher every single year than Deerfield.
That some other communities have, Epsom being one of them, Route Four is populated with businesses, which help offset an active twenty.
But they're higher. Epsom's higher.
Yeah, but they do have other avenues for generating revenue that aren't necessarily coming directly.
I just thought that was interesting. Town, town was pretty similar, but the school, we were, were lower.
So, that's the reality of it, um, it's kind of ready to be in next year.
Okay. Good.
Have any board reports?
I, there's no executive board. So we haven't. Yeah.
And NBC Tuesday, be there, be, well, COVID on Tuesday.
They have not yet finalized the, uh, town budget.
We, we have maybe one department lots to do, they. For all the meeting this week.
Yeah, so just as a warning, they will probably wrap up the town budget before we go.
If you can't make it, it's okay, when's the one? We made, we made two.
Don't worry.
I know, I know, but I feel like I should.
Um, okay, we're gonna hold on policies.
We're tailing the policies. The.
I'm gonna tell you.
Yeah, in a second.
The only informational meeting, um, I, I know my head was that we were having a public hearing on December twentieth to start, um, withdrawing some of the funds from the trust for the projects.
Do they have that here?
Yep, it just happens right before your board meeting and it's, um, just to gather public input before we withdraw the funds.
So it's like five o'clock, you vote?
No, at least six.
Oh, is that?
Not a lot of participation typically, so it's usually quick. Um, and then, non-public, I will just say, if you're prepared to ratify the paraprofessional contract tonight, um, I had a couple of things for non-public, if you're willing to do that, if you wanted to wait, it would just delay for two weeks. All right, so I would want to add that vote. Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Um, okay, and then we do have one.
We do have a.
Resignation.
Okay.
We also, okay, so now we're down to public comment number four.
I'm the one that says hurry, but I want to add.
I can hear your alarm.
Oh, yeah, that's all right. Uh, and I will. I just know something about codes, because I was on the building code review board, and I follow the law, uh, legally because I have to follow it. Um, there is no such thing as a local ordinance, um, at the state building code, granted, the state building code and the fire code are kind of separate things, but at the state level, the building code, they now have to actually be approved by the state building code. You can't just do something local, it now has to be posted and it has to be on there, and Deerfield does not have a local building code. Durham, Manchester, and Portsmouth do, Deerfield does not have anything at the state, I just checked the state website for myself for some other reason, so I happen to be quick for that. I doubt very much the fire marshal allows any locality to have a different ordinance than they do, I'd be shocked, absolutely shocked to say the same. So I just wanted to let you know, um, I am happy to look at the, the town ordinances because they should be posted, um, and if I find anything different, I will notify the chair.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd be glad to do. That is my world, I work in that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Nancy shoot real quick, because I only have other things to do, but, um, the word's already out there on the street, on Facebook, there are things already posted, so my, my comment to you is as much as. You can, and I think you have been doing a great job of trying to keep people informed, you're gonna need to take that one step more, Facebook's not gonna be enough. Um, I think in low-cost money, but somehow a mailing, so it does go to every single house. I also think you need to be really prepared, and I know you know this, but I just, when you can say it, you, you gotta spell out every single part that went up and why it went up. I know special ed, there's legal things, you can only say so much, but again, it's not that just necessarily more kids in Deerfield needed to be identified, it could be someone moved into town and things like that, as much as that can be clear. Um, and again. I think you, you are, do more than just a thank you. Um, you did listen, um, and you have continued to listen and I appreciate that. Um. It's not you when people say, oh, the school board did this, no, it was the voters that decided this, it's not on you guys, and you did what the voter, voters asked for. So, um, again, but as much as you can get that information out to people, and even, we know who comes to the meetings, it's the same friendly faces every time, so as much as you can get it out there for the people to know and ahead of time, as quickly as you can, because, as I said, it's already on Facebook. Thank you for everything, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, just really the same, the same thing that Nancy said, I think communication, there's so much on Facebook, and if you guys get out ahead of it, and I don't know how you do that, like she said, if it's a mailing or whatever, but, um. I found every, you know, everything you guys are talking about, working hard with the budget and all of that, I'm sitting here, hearing that, and it's good for me to hear that, and I'm not getting it from hearsay on Facebook and hearing what everybody else says. So, yeah, I don't know how, but, I mean, the town needs to communicate, I think the school board needs to communicate, and I, I don't know how it's done, but I think you guys are doing a great job. Appreciate you and, yeah, that's it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
And I'm riding with her, so she has to drive fast.
Anyone else?
I love you.
Sorry, I won't get there.
I, I heard you were meaning a noose. Will it be soft?
Do you like turquoise?
Will it be soft? Okay.
Or a muzzle? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to go into non-ballot session, uh, person to New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, section two, small letter A.
Yes.
Yes. Diane, get a second.
Oh, yeah, he didn't, you haven't finished yet, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, but you would be the minority, so it's a matter.
He says they'll be. So, yes, so, yes.
Okay, we got.